Good morning, everybody. We don't have a signed pastor today, but we'll do a 30-second moment of silence, please, and stand if you'd like. In special memory for the flagman. Ray, thank you. Thank you very much. So 10:01, May 16, 2023, opening the joint meeting of the Nye County Board of Commissioners, Nye County Board of Highway Commissioners, Nye County Licensing and Liquor Board, Nye County Board of Health, is the governing body of the unincorporated town of Perump, is the governing body of the unincorporated towns of Beatty, Gabbs, Manhattan, and the Board of Trustees for the Perump Pool District. Assistant Manager Lorena Dillinger, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number two, please, manager.
Item number two, general public comment. Up to three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on an agenda as an action item.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowling.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Bowling, B-O-L-L-I-N-G. I am here. I'm speaking about the, in public comment, to address what happened last week at the Tonopah landfill. Many people were told that they were going to be charged or have to pay in order to dump their stuff at the landfill. The landfill operators were told to start to inform people. They were going to have to tell, to tell us what waste was consisted of and where it came from. Tell us, us being public works. We need to do this so that we are charging the commercial haulers appropriately for the waste they are getting paid to haul to the landfill. This will also help us to stop any hazardous waste that might be brought into the landfill either inadvertently or on purpose. This turned into a landfill operator misspeaking to some of the homeowners that brought their waste to the landfill. No matter what was told to the public, Nye County is not charging homeowners or property owners that bring their waste to the landfill. We are charging the commercial waste haulers for the waste they are getting paid to haul to the landfill. No matter what, or, sorry. This is something that we have done all along. The only thing that has changed is we require non-household residential waste haulers to fill out a sheet of paper stating what they are bringing into the landfill and where it came from. The main reason for this is because we suspected that we were not capturing all of the commercial loads that were coming into the landfill. And based on the tickets that were collected last week alone, we were right. We collected more tickets last week than we have in the last month and a half. So we were undercharging people for hauling stuff into the landfill. So to reiterate, we are not charging local homeowners and property owners who choose to haul their own waste to the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Lane here in Perump.
Priscilla Lane, L-E-A-N-E, Friends of the Wild. First of all, I want to remind everyone, we have another meeting coming up on the 20th of May at 11:00 a.m., Desert Inn Green, the Desert Green Clubhouse off of Wilson. And I was wondering if any of the Commissioners have heard anything on our ordinance.
I stopped your time.
Thank you.
Normally, we, we try to answer these questions that you may pose at us after you've spoke. And the whole group has spoke.
Okay.
Because there may be multiple. You may be all asking the same things.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, so I just wait for afterwards? Okay. The other thing is, right now, the legislature is listening to SB 90, which I over, got excited. I was getting, I'm getting used to this government thing. It takes forever to get anything done. And they have a, it's going through legislature, also going through a vote, but the cattlemen, the hunters, the BLM, which is now called the Bureau of Livestock and Mining. They are all fighting this bill, which is not fair because it's the students of Washoe County that try to put this bill in. And it's only helping us, it's helping our horses. Because if you look, you pick up a book, you pick up a map, pick up a postcard, anything with Nevada, you have a horse. That is our thing. So they're fighting, they're trying to fight it. I wanted to bring attention to that the BLM is bringing up a, it's called a bureau, it's called a vehicle on the board. It's, they're, I can't explain. Anyways, is, people are going to come forward on this vehicle roundup that's coming up on 2/23. You can go to the BLM.zoom.gov.com/WEVinar/Register, and you can put your comment in on how you feel about the helicopters, because that's what it's about. This is going to be on 3:00 to 5:00, 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Mountain Time, and May 24. You can put in your, and the thing is, is they're not justifying why they're having the roundup. The roundup is out, not updated. This is as of 2/22, not 2, not this year. So anybody wants information, you can go to there. The other things are, we have, our, we have the ordinance coming on, and I'm, I'm getting a little flustered. But anyways, I thank you very much for your time. And if anybody has any information on the ordinance, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, there is two callers with their hand raised.
Just, just one. Just one.
Yeah, we'll go with the first one. Okay.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good morning, everybody. Amy Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. Last couple of days, some people had questions about every, you know, different departments and their salaries. So I went to Transparent Nevada, and every county in Nevada is updated to 2019. Nye County is the only one that is up to 2009, 2019. The others, I correct myself, are 2021. Every single one of them are updated to 2021, except Nye County. I don't know who is responsible for keeping that up to date, but they need to do something about it because it's transparency. My other comment is to thank Frank Carboni for going to the flagman's funeral services. I couldn't attend, which broke my heart because he was a good friend of mine. And I appreciate the Chair's respect for the moment of silence because he did so much for so many people in Nye County, not just Perump. He is an icon, and he's associated with the town of, of Perump. So I hope somewhere along the line, there's, there's something that is bright enough to remind people of him waving the flag with the Bill of Rights and always knowing what your constitutional rights are. That needs to be remembered in this county. I like to parrot some of the Senate bills that are passed going to the governor. The two biggest ones for me are SB 354 and SB 355. Those are about gun control. One is about where you can use your weapon, and the other one is about the age limit being increased to 21. And also, the Assembly Joint Resolution Number 6 is going to the Assembly. And that's the one that will give you a popular vote only. So people need to speak out about that one, or we're going to lose our voices in these small communities. So anyway, I'm looking forward to the meeting, and I hope it goes by quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Go ahead, sir, here in Perump, please. Sir?
Thought there was two phone calls. Hey, I'm here about the Michelle Fiori issue. I've been here two. Michael Little, L-I-T-T-L-E. I'm here regarding Michelle Fiori. I was here previously on the last two times, I believe. I served you all, or gave you a certificate that shows that she's in violation of the law. Nothing has occurred. I asked Frank Barone, Commissioner Barone Cabone, last year what I was to do. He said, "Serve the Nye County District Attorney's Office if you have legal issues." I've recently done that. I'm filing a lawsuit against Nye County, unfortunately, because there's been response. Each of you have a copy here, so I'm going to consider that service. The District Attorney's Office refused to accept service, this service, so forces me to come here today. So this public notice, I would, again, employ you before this thing keeps going further because it will only go further. To look into Michelle Fiori, she's, she's flagrantly violated the law. It's a party admission, and you have a responsibility to us, to the community. You put her there. We didn't get to vote for her. And she just doesn't know what she's doing. And so subsequently, we need to get somebody who's qualified to represent Nye County on that bench. Michelle Fiori, it was a nice try. She's just not qualified. You just can't, you can't keep forcing this issue because there's people's rights being violated like mine, and you're just going to start stepping up and filing lawsuits. Nobody wants to sue anyone. I don't want to list each and every one of you on a lawsuit. I don't want to go from a state court to a federal court because Nye County won't respond, my Commissioners won't respond to me, you know? So I'm asking you again, this will be the last time I appear, so you know. From here on out, everything will be done in the courthouse. And it's just a tragedy that we're going to have to spend the taxpayers' money to resolve this issue. Would you like me to leave these over here? They constitute service, just so you know.
They do not, but you can leave them on the desk, sir. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam? Not Sam, Janie.
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Erica Gerling, G-E-R-L-I-N-G. Good morning, Commissioners. Erica Gerling coming to you from beautiful, always, Beatty, Nevada. Have a good meeting, and I'm here if you have any questions for us in Beatty.
Thank you, Ms. Gerling.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, here in Perump, please.
Joe Opatic, O-P-A-T-I-K. 25-year resident, Perump. I recently came on board with Lakeview. I want to tell you about some of the things that we're trying to get accomplished over there. I'm now assigned as the events coordinator. We've updated the menu so that we can have, rather than just hot dogs, we'll be having pulled pork sandwiches, we'll have sliders and the hot dogs, and we're trying to expand the menu. Trying to get more people to frequent the course, not in just golf. But we'd like to have people there to use the facility. Also, I'm trying to set up different types of revenue opportunities. We're going to open it up to meeting rooms, social fundraisers. There's enough capacity there that we can accommodate 100 people on both floors. I've spoke with the fire chief, building and grounds, and they agreed, as long as we don't have something in the second story that violates somebody that can't participate. So the handicaps will be serviced in that manner. We're also doing a program for the school, for the school kids, called First He. It's something that's been widely used in some of the other communities, and we'd like to offer it up to the Perump community. Or anybody that wants to participate. I had an opportunity to meet with Karen Holly, and she appreciates that. She shared the information with the principal. Going to set up field trips so they, they can bring the kids out. They can learn a little bit about the social environment, how they can use the facilities to, for mathematics. How much square footage does it take to aerate a green or put down fertilizer, things of that situation? So it's a good opportunity for the kids. It's a free service. We'll set up an area so that they can walk through the course and get different education on different parts of it. We enjoyed your support so far. We'd like to see that continue. I had a good talk with Ms. Ledbetter and tourism. I think she's going to be a great asset. Appreciate her efforts. We're going to try and set up some flyers that go out to outside of the community that will allow us to, as people come in, RVers, things of that sort, we'll offer up a stay-and-play package. So they can get rentals. We'll give them a discount if they stay at one of the local hotels, and they can get a golf package as well. She introduced me to Ms. Tillot from Golden Entertainment. They as well are going to offer to stay and play. They will promote that through all the casinos that they are participating with. My time is up. Okay.
Yes, excuse me, Ms. Opatic. If you don't mind, sir, if you don't mind, let everybody know that your hour is for their breakfast, lunch, dinner. We have almost a full house today.
Oh. Yeah, there's going to be lunch specials. They'll be from 11:00 to 2:00, and happy hour from 4:00 to 6:00.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Go ahead, sir, here in Perump.
My name is James Peter. I am a resident here in Perump for four years. We have an issue
Sorry, Mr. Peters. Can you spell your last name for the record? Can you hear me?
P-E-T-E-R.
Thank you, sir.
Now, we have an issue, we've had an issue now for the last two years, a real issue, with a squatter on a property across from our own properties. Now, the county has been working, working on that through the compliance officer in the fire department, the planning department. This property, this, this gal has been on this property for, going on six years. She's a squatter. Now, she has been given the ultimatum to leave this property by the 2nd of June. Now, what we as residents want to do, we want to, we want to participate in the cleanup of the property. Get everything out of there because it's a real disaster. It's a real mess. And what, what we'd like to get from the county is to put a couple drop boxes on that property that we as residents can fill up and let, and be, and its stuff be taken to the dump site. Because it's, it's, because she's been informed already that if she's not out of there by the 2nd, or, you know, 2nd at 6:00 p.m., that we're to call the sheriff's department, and she would be arrested. And we just want to be sure that that actually happens and that the county shows responsibility here because they made the rules of who can live on properties, how long, and such. This gal's been there going on six years. We started, the first complaint was made two years ago, December. And then, from that point on, it's been in the court and out of the court. The owner, the person that they were going after was the owner, and he didn't show up, and then he finally showed up, and he's due back in court on the 5th of June. Now, it's true, he gave, he's given permission to us to go in there and help clean, clean this property up. So that's what, that's what we as residents plan to do. We want to do our part and clean this up, but we want the county to help us out with the drop boxes on this property. And so, so we can finally bring this, this issue to an end. That's pretty much what I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peter. Is there anybody on the phone?
I've got some pictures of this property if they want to have these.
You can leave it on the desk here, sir. Just on the desk here. Thank you.
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yes, good morning. This is Timbo Boha, N-O-H-A, N-O-H-A. Calling to make sure that the folks are aware that the Perump High School Boys Baseball Team, varsity, is in the state playoffs, and they play on the 18th against Churchill County. Their last game, they beat Virginia County, or Virginia City at a total of 11 to nothing. So we've got a good team. They're playing up at Virginia, they're playing up in Virgin City. So that's where the playoff game is, and that's on the 18th. Root them on. Cheer them from here, cheer them from person. I'm sure a lot of the parents are going to go. But definitely, they've got, they've got a good chance. And they've got good pitching, good hitting, and good fielding as well. That's what I have for this morning. Thank you. And looking forward to the finance budget discussion later on this morning.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, here in Perump, please.
My name's Linda Walters, W-A-L-T-E-R-S, and I'm here really supporting Mr. Peter. I live directly across the street from the squatter. And we've been here for, going on two years. Beautiful home we bought, but it is disaster across the street. I read the bylaws for Nye County, and they say that you can have a mobile home on your property as long as you have a home established there that can't be moved. And she has nothing, she's brought in. Had a fire two years ago and burned it all down. Came in, now she has six or seven trailers on there with, moving other people in now, like a commune. We thought, this is like David Koresh commune over there. We'd really, really like to have your help getting us, getting her off of there. This has just become a mess. We watch the rats go back and forth. My husband and I are older. I can't even go out in the front to pull weeds without her being so vulgar to me. I don't say anything back. I've never met the woman. I don't know nothing about her, really, other than she's bringing everything in there, rats coming back and forth and everything. So it's a, it's a disaster over there. And we just want to make sure that we can get help and get some kind of, we're all volunteering, the whole street is volunteering to clean it up once she's off of there, if she doesn't move everything out of there. But if you'd just please help us, we would really like some backup on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Southworth, here in Perump, please.
Good morning. Diane Southworth, S-O-U-T-H-W-O-R-T-H. Just got a few things from our community outreach meeting. I have a flyer here for Mental Health First Aid, which would allow people to get certified to help people who have some mental issues. And you can go to mentalhealthfirstaid.org to get signed up. And I think that would be appropriate. We, we need a lot of help with that. We also have, for our youth and families, affordable mental health providers are now here at the NCC. So you can come in, get ahold of somebody who can help you, and it's at an affordable, available price. And just contact NCC, and they'll be able to help you with that. And then we have a support group for parents and guardians. Monday mornings at 10:00 a.m. and evenings at 6:00 p.m. And it's at Kenny Behavioral, 70th South, Highway 60, Suite 104 in Perump. So that would help parents get used to kids and how we have to take care of them because, you know, they can be a handful. We also have Chronic Disease Self-Management Workshop. Starts May 31st through July 5th at 9:00 a.m., and that's at the Senior Center. The majority of our meeting was on drug addiction and all the problems that we have with that. We've got a grant that's over $300,000 that we can use through the state. We have to follow their rules and what they will allow us to do. But it's about prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. We need all of the above. I would love to see the school board let us do presentations at the high school and the junior, and the middle school to teach kids what the dangers are and how to look for those dangers. I would also think that you could probably do certain things in the elementary schools, like don't eat candy when you don't know where it's from, et cetera. That could be done on a light basis to get them started on that. We are having workshops, and they're setting up a task force. It was very informative. And I think that everybody here should be concerned because the fentanyl deaths are going up, the opioid deaths are going up, and it's a major problem. I'm hoping that the community can get behind this. Anybody who wants to help out, please contact the NCC unit. You can go online, or you can visit their office on Wilson. And I would hope that everybody would get involved because we definitely need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lackey, here in Perump, please.
Darryl Lackey, L-A-C-K-E-Y. Yeah, the last newspaper was out talking about these tiny housing or whatever. People ask me, "Oh, is that your program?" And I say, "No, no, no. My program is not slums. It's not segregating people that are poor away from the people that are, like a drive-by zoo or something that y'all can, what, drive by and say, 'Here's the poor people. See, we did something for them.'" No, my program is to get people out of the park, and that's functional. Now, Ms. Southworth was just talking about drug addiction. Drug, if people have nothing in their life going on, they go to drugs. People that have something going on in their life, they don't go to drugs. They don't need to. So people say, "Oh, well, oh, well, you know, the state's mandating that you change, you know, have a zone where people can have tiny houses and that sort of thing." Well, it comes back to Brett Wagner. He says, "Well, we got some that are kind of close to that, so we're just going to stick with that." So that's where it is, right there. It's the Brett Wagner thing. He's not going to allow for another set of zoning laws. He's already, he's already decided. I heard him. He said, "Oh, no, we have some that's kind of like that, and some is, yeah, it's good enough." No, no, it's not good enough. None of what, any of you're doing is solving the problem. It's time to do something a little drastic. It's a big problem. It's not just here. It's everywhere. People ask me, "Oh, they bringing buses in here?" I say, "Yes, they're bringing buses of people up here from Vegas." We all know that. The problem ain't going away. I know you're afraid that if we have a program, people will be flocking here. No, no, no. I got ways to keep people from flocking in. If you make it sound easy, people will come and try to take advantage. But if you make it sound like a challenge, you'll only get a few people that want to do something with their life. There's a lot of people that are on the street that want to do something, but there's nothing that they can go and get right into and sink their teeth into and get, and do. My program is, I'm, I'm doing it elsewhere in the meantime. Something similar to this. But I'm pushing along, and I ain't leaving y'all. And I like to call it like it is, and I'm not going to stop doing that.
Thank you. Is there anybody, Janie, on the phone, please?
No, Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lilly, here in Perump, please.
Dwight Lilly, L-I-L-L-Y. Got really three issues I wanted to bring up to the Commissioners. About 12 years ago, the Commission Board eliminated the town of Perump with the idea that, well, you guys could operate as our representatives, do the right thing by us. But I'm wondering if it isn't time that we add our own autonomous town board here once again. We've got decisions made on tiny homes. That was been mentioned already today. When I looked at the law, it says the county is supposed to designate a zoning area for tiny home. So I don't know if that means that the zoning area that's been designated means every home in that zoning area, I mean, every area that, that zoning area is involved in, can allow tiny homes in? I don't know. The location of it upsets me. Third thing is, why is Perump, in a county as large as it is with multiple cities, the only one that's being addressed, charged with addressing a tiny home legislative bill, AB 150? Why are we the only ones designated to do anything about it? Second issue I want to bring up to the school district. I got a printout of the report card for the school district that had misspelled word on it that was sent out. If the school district itself can't even spell correctly on the notice they sent out, how do we expect the kids to spell? I saw a photocopy of a meal that looked like dog food that was given to one of the ladies' elementary school kids. We have over 1,100 employees in a Nye County school district, 300 and some teachers. 1,500 people in this county are working for the school district, and a report card, 34% chronic absenteeism. Where's the truant officer? Why isn't that being addressed by Perump Town Board? That's supposed to be representing me. The dope. I brought it up when you guys started licensing dope in this town. I said, "That's a gateway drug. You're going to bring dope to our town." Sure enough, I don't pick the paper up or watch TV that there isn't another drug arrest, some crime associated drugs. The Commissioners brought The commission here's brought that to my town. Again, I believe that we should have our own elected town board here that represents the people of Perump and our desires. I, I don't understand how it got so out of whack. It is, you guys believe you're doing a great job. But I don't believe those three items right there represent a town that's doing a great job. You got too much on your plate as county commissioners. Let the town of Perump, that's now growing up, will be 50,000 people before you know it, self-rule itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Colonel Waters, here in Perump, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tom Waters, W A T E R S. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. I was, I spoke to you some time back at one of the other meetings about remembering Ron Frazier. And I'd like to repeat that. Ron has done so much for our, for our town and our county. And whatever we do, I'd like you to have the staff look at a way to recognize him. I mentioned before about the fairgrounds, maybe the community center at the fairgrounds or the fairgrounds itself. Either way would be appropriate. But if the staff or you come up with another way of recognizing Ron Frazier, that's appropriate as well. I don't want to close the door on that, but I want to keep the name Ron Frazier before all of us. He's, he's done a lot. I also want to talk about Our Veterans Are Heroes. That's an article in the Perump Life Magazine that Ron Frazier created. Now, the magazine itself is going to continue. His legacy is going to continue. But Our Veterans Are Heroes, that's a, a section that I take care of. And I always look for stories from our veterans. So if you know of any veterans that have not written their stories and had them published in the Perump Life Magazine, please see me, contact me, or the staff of, of Perump Life Magazine to have your story placed in there. It's a story, those are stories that the, the high school students really love to read. They like to know what their veterans have done in service to our country. And these stories really enlighten them. It's, it's historical data as well. It's also something that the veteran themselves can pass on to their families, their children, grandchildren, so that they know what, what their relatives did as far as service to our country. I also want to talk about the banners that you see on Calvada. In disarray at this point, but they are being worked on. That's an excellent program. It's something that the county has taken on. But they're doing a great job of getting it together. And I know it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work, but they are working on it. So let's support them on that program. And Purple Heart Day is always August 7th. It was established in 1782 by George Washington, so we can't change the date. It is August 7th and we'll have Purple Heart Day again here. We'll be asking for a proclamation by the county and we'll have a, a complete program at that time. But the real reason that I came up today was to talk about Ron Frazier. Please do not forget the name Ron Frazier. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, here in Perump, ma'am.
Good morning, I'm Ms. Shuey, S H U E Y, northwest part of Perump. I've talked to Commissioner Carbone concerning this tiny home. And I personally went on to the internet and just looked it up. I personally had a Zoom conversation with a lady who is of the 11th District in Las Vegas who devised this bill. There's four other people that honed in with her, but she's the one who devised it. And she said, why she did, and she wanted a small property in Las Vegas, she said she couldn't find one, or even in Nevada. And so she thought, hey, let's just get what kind of size home? There's no regulations. So she created this bill. I'm making it short and simple. Everybody here can go on the internet and find this out. So I was very naive. I heard this busload story about homeless people being shipped in. I'm like, aliens, do something about those aliens. And I know, we will eventually. So anyway, so I brought up the point about why weren't we able to vote on it? It seems like we're becoming a democratic society, but we're not even vote on. And she said, and she described it, I'm not gonna go into detail, but basically, once it gets up to the governor's office, and Sisalak was in town, is the governor at that time, he signed off on it. But here we are in Perump, and I heard the man about the town of Perump voting on something. And that sounds like a good idea. If there's some way the zoning situation we have to set up in Perump to designate these tiny homes, and we all have very, not we all, but there's many large properties that could have a designated tiny home on there, I guess, if the zoning committee allows for that. So it's how, right now, we're at the point of zoning. How are we gonna zone in if we even want these tiny homes? I don't know if we can really go back and say, we don't want it. The town of Perump says, screw this, we don't want it. Tonopah wants it, fine, take it. But can we take the zoning where it's just in someone's big 10-acre property? Or maybe, I have two acres. I could put a tiny home in there. I don't want to. But anyway, so can we make the zoning idea that you folks are gonna come up with really designate how it's gonna impact us, the water, the blacktop that's gonna be going on? Because I want less people, less blacktops, less problems that we have in Perump, and better water conditions, and ability to run this town the way we want to. So the zoning committee really has to work on, where do you want to put these tiny homes? Do we even want them in here? That's not the zoning committee, but also people look at Appendix Q. That is very important for knowing about how these tiny homes are gonna be put into your community and how they're built.
Thank you, Ms. Shuey. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Perump, and on the phone. I'll close public comment and move on to number three, please, manager.
Item three, Commissioner Manager's comments. This item limited to announcements or topics and issues proposed for future workshops and agendas.
Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, I have a few things, and I was gonna ask the director zoning to come down, but I see he's coming anyway.
Morning, Commissioner.
Hi. I'd like to start out with a couple of comments about the tiny homes.
Me too.
To start with, they're not junk. These are going to fall under all the regulations. Anything else falls under, they're gonna have to be permitted and all that kind of stuff, right? And we've already been through the zoning process and we did pick out lots that are all together. And it's more or less like a mobile home park where they'd be allowed. They have water, they have sewer. And I'm not real happy with the location because I think they're too close to downtown. But if we end up doing that, I mean, anything can change. So if we end up doing that, they will be adequate for these because they're so small, we can't really put a decent house on them. And that was the product of preferred equities. When they bought up this whole town and they divided it all up, and that was 30 years ago or more. And so we're stuck with what we have. We've had those lots all this time, not been able to do anything on them. And this is not a low-income housing project. This is not for street people. These houses have to meet certain qualifications and they start at $60,000. We're not talking about a shed out of somebody's backyard. I mean, anybody can put a shed in their backyard, I guess, and move in it, nobody even knows. But that's not the idea here, it's not the concept. It would be expensive to move in there. You're gonna have to be able to qualify for credit. You're gonna have to put down a down payment. It goes on and on. This is not a federal housing project, let's put it that way. I don't, there's no money been allocated towards this like grants or anything else. So if you'd like to follow along, you can come to the meetings and see what you miss. But other than that, no, I resent people thinking that we would even be that type of a board that we would just bring in a bunch of trash, as you call it. And somebody is trying to instigate a problem. It has nothing to do with us. So I advise you to go back and look at the item. Mr. Wagner explained it very well that day. And it got a five to zero vote, although I was protesting the location. It didn't have anything to do with the fact that it's a bad place. It had to do with the fact that I feel that that's prime highway property in that area. And I think it could be, been better used in the frontage to put in a commercial center or something. And then I just asked them to pull the housing part of it back away from the highway some. So we'll work that out in the future. Anyway, go ahead. Would you like to speak?
I would. I want to make one.
Excuse me, this is not discussion time. This needs to be commented only by the Commissioners or the Managers.
I was gonna have him make a comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox, what, what we'll do is we'll let Director Wagner come up during manager comment as soon as the Commissioners are finished, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Thank you, Director.
Or he can stand there for a while.
Or you can stand in the corner over there for a while.
Just don't go too far. So I've addressed that. Oh, the marijuana, cannabis, I guess we call it now. I think the law changed the name for some reason. I just want to remind everybody that we're not up here just hem-hawing around and bringing a bunch of druggies in. That's the impression you give everybody. This was brought here by the people who voted for it in the state of Nevada. You guys all voted for it, apparently. We didn't do anything except have to put in the laws and follow the laws that were put upon us by the state. We don't make these laws up. As far as that goes, we do get tax revenue law from it, which should help everybody. It goes into our budget and we use it for the people. We use it for the town. We can't, regardless of what people say, we can't put it in our pocket. Our pockets are being watched. There's nothing out there worth giving up our jobs for and going to jail. So I just want to let you know that you have it because the people voted it in, not because we made the decision. Then it comes to us and we have to decide what we're gonna do with it. And it was started out as medical marijuana and the state changed it. So now you have recreational marijuana, and there was nothing we could do to stop it. Mr. Waters, I think we have a veteran here. You asked for a name. We have a veteran here that's not been heard of, as, as far as the magazine goes, because I follow those magazines. And you might approach Charlie Culkin. I think he'd really like to do something like that. Is he going to? I'll talk to him. Yeah, so, let's see, what have I got? Oh, God, there were so many things this morning. Tiny homes. I guess I will stop there. I'll let somebody else go, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boskovich, please.
So first of all, on the tiny home thing, I am not a fan of that. The, the way we voted on that was the most benign way we could have voted to keep control and design standards on a project like that. So there's that. Secondly, on the squatter situation, which is what everything up on the hill is, and evidently, Mr. Peter's situation is there as well. I think we need to be really, really careful and not incentivize that more than we should be. Help people where we need to help them, but I don't think that we should be bringing people in here from elsewhere to take advantage of the services that we're providing. And then lastly, the solar, because I remember, the sign there reminded me, I am absolutely against the solar projects. If, if we had a way to fight back against BLM and keep them out of there, I would absolutely do that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Carbone, please.
I just listened to everybody else. They had a lot to say, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland, please.
Did you want to speak again? Okay. Sorry. The only thing that, we, we had a lot of items that came up that I'm hoping the director might be able to help us with. Ms. Lane and the ordinance, I have no idea what that was. Mr. Peters and us helping with, what, garbage disposal? I think there's probably, I understand several vehicles there, which would be a problem because we don't have titles, we can't move them, we can't do anything. Big issue. That's code compliance. He knows what he's doing there. And I just want the people to realize that, those, that property that's left behind when that person's left, asked to leave, is their personal property. And we have no jurisdiction over it. That's up to the property owner to come up with a solution for that. And so we'll, we'll await how that happens after June 2nd. That's how I see it, and the rest of the Commissioners will get there if we have to, I'm supposing. And finally, we got affronted by Mr. Little about serving us papers and us not responding to his ideas. We, why don't you start litigation? It's our obligation to allow our attorney to handle that, imagine that. So our district attorney will handle things as he sees fit. And we don't get the opportunity to address Mr. Little anytime litigation happens. So when we just sit here with our mouths shut, it's because it's what you should do if you're served to. So anyway, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will just remind everybody that we have two binders today because we have so much backup and it's over here on the desk where Arnold Knightley is sitting. If there's anything that you want to review, read during, after lunch, you know, and the rest of the meeting, that would be great. There's a lot of material to, to review. And I would be remiss, I know it's Tuesday, but I would like to, and I'm going to wish a happy belated Mother's Day to all of you, and all of you here on the, on the dais and out in the audience and on the phone. Because Mother's Day is a very special day for all of us. So I just wanted to share that with, with all of you as well. So at this time, I will turn it over to the Directors and Managers for comments, please.
Director Wagner, in case you forgot, you've already heard my name a few times this morning.
I've been trying to forget you since I met you.
Likewise. So, yes, just a little more on the tiny home thing. One correction I wanted to make is that the direction given to staff was actually to write an ordinance to allow tiny homes where today park model homes are allowed in a park-type setting. Has nothing to do with the single-family lots. That was one of the scenarios that was referred to up by the highway. The other thing I want to reiterate is this absolutely has nothing to do with anything to address the homeless issue or situation we have in town. Because I'm guessing if they're walking around with $60,000, $80,000 in their pocket, they probably wouldn't be looking to, you know, live up on the hill or wherever they choose to live. And so I know, I literally went one day yesterday, first time in two weeks, not having to answer, what about the tiny home village that N I County is doing? It was a peaceful day, but I had planned on addressing it again and maybe eventually people will understand what's actually, you know, taking place. And the only other thing on that subject is, we will be bringing forward an ordinance, just like we were directed to do. It's gonna be showing up in the DA's office here very shortly for review. I'm anticipating probably having it on the agenda for June 20th, the second meeting, to set a date and time for public hearing, so. Or 27, whatever we end up with, as we move through the agenda. The other thing on the Ambler situation, yes, that is being addressed. It's, you know, if people, folks gotta understand that our recourse is with the property owner. It's not with the person trespassing or squatting or anything on that property. Because for all we know, they've been given permission to be there. But our, we have to address things through co-compliance with the property owner. And this particular property owner has been difficult to get ahold of and locate. I mean, they aren't lying. It's been a couple of years. But we have a process we have to go through. So when it does end up in the courtroom somewhere, like it is now, you know, we can see it through and actually not have our two years' worth of effort thrown in the garbage because it gets dismissed. So we do have an MOU with the property owner now. Property owner has agreed, gave notice to the people occupying the property that they need to vacate and all their belongings. Anything left there come June 2nd, it's his.
Is that the way that works?
Yes. It's abandoned.
So you go through abandon titles and stuff? Thank you, Director, for specifying that.
It is definitely running its course. We do have an MOU. I do believe the date was correct. And the Sheriff's Department at the ready. If need be, and I'm gonna probably go out on a limb and bet there'll be a need to have somebody arrested to get them removed off of that property. But it's a very unsafe property. Had to fire chief. But it's a very unsafe property. Had the fire chief out there, co-compliance out there, Sheriff's Department out there. This particular property had, last time I checked, which is probably three months ago, since October, 30-something calls for service on that property through dispatch. So it's a bad situation. So I feel for them, but we are trying to do what we can do.
Thank you, Director. Director Bowling?
Good morning again, commissioners. I want to bring something to the forefront. Oh, Tom Bowling, B-O-L-L-I-N-G, sorry. We are starting to really see the negative results of having and not having an updating plan for our fleet. We have high-mileage outdated vehicles throughout the county. Multiple departments need to have some of their vehicles replaced immediately. DEM, facilities, IT are a few of the departments that need to have their vehicles replaced. And some of those are specialty vehicles that we can't just take out of our motor pool. Finance has reported that there is no money for capital again this year, and there probably won't be next year or the year after. Grants is looking for dollars in every aspect, trying to find them. And if she finds something, she sends it to us. We look at it to see if it'll apply or not apply. If it applies, then that's good. We'll go for it. But as of right now, we haven't found anything that we, that will qualify for this. We need to figure out where the money comes from, will come from, because these vehicles need to be replaced. Facility's resurrected a 1996 GMC 3500 just so that their people can drive to the different buildings and work on them. That's not kosher. We shouldn't be doing that. We should be able to purchase one, two, three vehicles for a department. Maybe we need to put other projects on hold, use some of the other monies that are able to go anywhere and use them to replace some of the vehicles in our fleet. I don't know. I'll leave that up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any directors or managers on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Thank you. County Clerk Comf, please.
Yes, Mark Comf, Nye County Clerk. I just want to remind the citizens that we're looking to fill the committees for the ballot issue that will be on the ballot in November of 2024 regarding the five-cent diesel tax. We're looking for individuals who are willing to step up and work to develop arguments for and against the ballot issue, which is to impose a five-cent diesel tax, and that would be effective in January of 2025. So please reach out to the Nye County Clerk's office. You can send me an email. You can click on a link on our website, or call the Clerk's office at 775-482-8127, and you can get an application to be part of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Arnold Knightley, please.
Good morning, Arnold Knightley, Public Information Officer, KNIGHTLY. I just wanted to address that we have been sending information through public records requests to Transparent Nevada. They're run by the Nevada Policy Institute. We sent them the 2021 on September 19th. They again asked for 2020, 2021 on March 2nd of this year, and then they asked for May 1st, on May 1st, they asked for 2022. So it's a different person each time with that organization. We have no control over them posting it. It's a public record, and we send it to them, and it is kind of frustrating because we put the effort in. HR puts the document together. We send it to them, and then people go look, and it looks like we're hiding something. But that's all we can do.
Thank you for the clarity. We have no idea what goes on over there.
Thank you. Are there any other managers? Mr. Martinez.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jimmy Martinez, M-A-R-T-N-E-Z. Just want to report that movie in the park will be set and ready to go for, first movie will be June 3rd at Patrick Park, Ian Deutsch Field, I'm sorry, Patrick. Ian Deutsch Park, Ian Deutsch Memorial Park, Field 4. Movie will start at dusk, and then it will go from there all the way until 10 weeks. So first movie is...
Lion King.
Strange World. It's an animated movie. So should be a good movie for the whole family. We have it posted right now at all our parks, and Arnold is actually posting it on social media for us. And for the Prump Pool, we expected to do a soft opening, the 27th and 28th, from noon to 6:00, and then on the 29th, we'll go back to full schedule. So. And we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
I mean, Janie. You'll have to excuse me. I think, Sam, just so you know, Sam is her middle name. Okay. Hearing and seeing no other manager, Commissioner comment, I will close. Number three, move on to number four, please, manager.
Item number four, approval of the agenda for May 16th, 2023. Commissioners, the only items to be removed today are on the first page of your agenda, and that's items five and item nine. We do have a few that will be continued, but we'll get to those when we do. So the only items being pulled for today are items five and nine.
Thank you, manager. Number six, please.
Item six, 10 a.m. timed item for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding the monthly statement of county treasurer pursuant to NRS 354.280, including receipts, balances, and funds, money on deposit, outstanding checks, and cash on hand.
Do we have Treasurer Powers on the phone, please?
Chair, I do have a hand raised. I'll unmute. Caller, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Braylen Powers, POWERS. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have March bank reconciliation and treasurer's reports for presentation today. Apologies again. I did actually dress to come into the meeting. Unfortunately, there is a lot of things going on in our office today, and so I made a decision to stay in and help our department out.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer. Is there anything that you wanted to highlight for us and for the public?
No, we are getting some of the smaller items cleaned off of the bank reconciliation. We're getting more efficient in getting our items recorded into our accounting software. I honestly believe we're doing pretty good, and things are looking up for our department.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Chair, that was gonna be my comment. I could see some of the, some of these items are cleaning up a little bit quicker, especially some of the smaller items. So things are starting to look better in regards to the whole report.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the treasurer?
No, sir. No.
No? Nope. Okay. Let me open this up for public comment at this time. Is there any public comment? Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment, and perump ton upon on the phone, I'll close public comment. And thank you very much, Treasurer Powers.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Have a great day and hope things work out over at the office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Sutton, at this time, I'd like to open, at the same time, number seven, 14, 21, 23, 25, and 27. Yes. I'd like to open number seven, number 14, 21, 23, 25, and 27.
If he hadn't repeated it, I would have, so. Opening item seventeen, or sorry, seven, 14, 21, 23, 25, 27. All 10 a.m. timed items for possible action. Public hearing, discussion, and deliberation to adopt or amend and adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 for Nye County, Prump, Beatty, Gabs, Manhattan, and the Prump Pool District. And interim comptroller Jordan had a few comments.
So I take it we're continuing this? Is the reason for opening it?
Good morning, Commissioners. Elizabeth Jordan, Nye County Finance, and I would like to request to continue these items to the May 31st meeting. We did receive approvals from DTAX to move forward with the final. Unfortunately, I was not able to complete all the requirements prior to today's meeting for the backup to be included. So we'd like to request to continue to the May 31st.
Chair, we get public comment if we need to. I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
We sure appreciate you stepping in interim while we get a permanent comptroller, and more than understand that you might need a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you, comptroller. Go ahead, Commissioner, and I'll entertain the motion. I'll open for public comment.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue those items seven, nine, 14, 21, 23, 25, 27 to the May 31st Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for public comment, please. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment, and perump ton upon on the phone, I'll close public comment and call for the vote to continue.
Aye.
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 Carbone, aye. Jaboorzai. Numbers seven, 14, 21, 23, 25, and 27, pass 5-0 to continue to May 31st. Thank you, comptroller.
Thank you, everyone.
Number eight, please, manager.
Item eight, 10 a.m. timed item for possible action. Public hearing, discussion, and deliberation on ZCMP-23-4, an application for a zone change to change a 1.82 acre portion of a 10.43 acre parcel from specific plan to neighborhood commercial for property located at 4779 East Mountain Falls Parkway, Prump, Nevada. Assessor's parcel number 04502174, Mountain Falls LLC, property owner, Tanny Engineering, applicant slash agent.
Go ahead, Director.
Director Wagner, W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R. So this property, some of you guys are probably familiar with if you've been out in Mountain Falls, going to the grill room, or you live out there or drive by there. It's had RVs on it for quite some time. It was more meant to be more of a temporary situation while they were trying to find a developer to develop RV storage, mini storage somewhere adjacent to Mountain Falls. And this was just meant to be a temporary solution, and it still is, but we were doing them to temporary use permits to, you know, in a year or two basis, and we were coming up on another renewal. So kind of the deal was that if you guys don't have a permanent plan, we're gonna require the zone change and the land use to be designated for the time being. So that's basically all they're asking to do. I will say it was in front of the RPC on the April 12th meeting, and it was recommended for approval to this board. Also, there was a conditional use permit that was also approved, obviously contingent on this zone change for that use of the property as well. So I'm here for any other questions.
I have a question, please, Director, if you don't mind. Just to clarify for me, please. Bless you, Commissioner. In the backup on page three, and you mentioned temporary, temporary permit. So this allows for temporary RV storage lot that will expire, according to the backup, August 7th of 2023, which is only a few months from now. Is this, am I reading this wrong, or?
Yes, sir, you are. That's referring to the temporary use permit that they are operating or that they're storing.
Currently on.
That they're currently on. It's set to expire, so they're trying to get this done before that expiration.
Got it. Okay. And then if this is indeed temporary, how long are we, how long are we moving to?
We didn't really specify a time of how long this can be allowed, because it is gonna be required to go through site development. The applicant did ask for a waiver of landscape requirements. The only thing, and it was not granted, just, you know, because my thought was, and I argued, if I lived in Mountain Falls, everything else is so beautiful, you know, why would this not be held to the same standard? With the exception of some plants. That was their concern, was running irrigation across the street to water the plants. But basically, if I remember right, in the conditions for the CUP, it is set to expire when... Let's see, I was trying to find that. Basically, everything they've indicated in their letters and stuff that this is gonna be temporary, that they're still trying to look for a permanent solution, because they want to obviously build houses at some point, because this part is a prime, yeah, it's a part of a bigger piece of land out at Mountain Falls. And I know the intention is to develop it at some point into a subdivision.
Okay, so does December 12th, 2023 sound familiar?
No.
As the CUP, that's on page eight, Director.
That was for the waiver.
Yeah. December 12th, 2023, this rule use permit shall automatically expire unless the applicant submits and obtains approval of a category one. Yes, that's because we are requiring them to go through.
Site.
Site development.
Right.
Review, just like any other commercial development would.
And if they don't?
If they don't, then it'll expire. If they do, then it'll remain in effect.
Okay.
Standard condition.
Standard, I understand, but as we're discussing this, where I'm going is, if it's indeed temporary, right, we need to put some kind of date on there that reflects that it's temporary.
Well, that's already been, I mean, no disrespect at all, but that's a, that's a decision for the RPC. They're the final action on a conditional use permit, and it's already been approved as you read it.
And doesn't it say, in fact, on page two, it does say in the body under recommendations that we should, in fact, be saying, and findings subject to all the conditions as outlined in the staff report, which would then dictate the date.
Yes.
So in fact, if we would take the initial effort of making our motion reflect exactly that statement, then we've covered ourselves. Would that satisfy?
Yes.
I think that would satisfy everybody.
That was the motion I was gonna make.
Perfect. Thank you.
When we're ready.
We're ready.
When we're ready. I will tell you that the zone change itself will expire. There is a condition under special condition number two on page eight, that when the property is no longer, once the RV storage is relocated, then the zoning will revert back to its original zoning.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for the Director?
Not me.
No? Okay, let me open this up for public comment, please, Director. Don't go too far away. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Of course. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Janie, Sam? No. Still no.
Still, still no.
No, doesn't matter what I call it. Okay, hearing and seeing no public.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to. Approve ZCMP-23-4 based on RPC and staff's recommendations and findings, and subject to all conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Jaboorzai.
Aye.
Number eight passes 5-0. Number 10, please, manager.
Item 10, 10 a.m. timed item for possible action. Public hearing, discussion, and deliberation to issue an outdoor festival license to Kelly Sater for the Prump 4. to issue an outdoor festival license to Kelly Sater for the Perump Fourth of July Redneck Pool and Barbecue to be held July 4th, 2023 at Petreck Park located at 150 North Highway 160, Perump, Nevada.
Hello, I'm Kelly Sater, S-A-T-E-R. I am the owner of what was previously called the Bearded Lady Saloon. And one thing I used to do there every year was hold the Redneck Pool barbecue thing. And so when I changed the name and changed the concept of the bar, the one major question was, what about the Redneck Pool Party? So my plan, if approved, would be to move this to the park. It has actually grown pretty big to where I couldn't even fit it in my parking lot at my bar location. So I would like to kind of combine it with the Fourth of July fireworks show as well that's hosted each year and make it like a family friendly event, not vendors, not anything like that, just kind of people can come and just have fun and join the redneck truck decorating competition. And we have a lot of different games that we play that are family friendly. And yeah. Questions?
Excellent. Any questions for Ms. Sater?
Well, yes, and I'd like some input from Jimmy Martinez, too. You know, we want to put on an excellent event, want you to be successful. So space determination, have you been working with staff to make sure that we can coexist with our Fourth of July event and yours?
Yes, I've been talking with Courtney and Jimmy at the park, and we have, I'll be using Field A, but not all of Field A. That way, people can still come, they can bring their blankets, they can bring, you know, coolers, everything. They just want to come there for the fireworks show and not necessarily be a part of the activities that'll be going on in the park. And if they do want to just come over and check it out, it's fine, it's not going to be closed off. But if they do want to be part of the competitions or be part of the contests and the games, there is a small fee that I will be charging, and that'll just kind of help cover the costs of what it takes to put on those.
What do you think, Mr. Martinez? You happy with the idea, the concept?
Morning, Commissioners, Jimmy Martinez, M-A-R-T-N-E-Z. Yes, Kelly has been working closely with us. She has right now scheduled to have Afield for the event. It'll be spread out through the perimeter of Afield, so most of Afield will be open for the public. Some areas she'll take up, but other than that, like she said, she'll be open to the public, and they can participate or choose not to.
What, the way we've got that park built, unfortunately, you can't do gate fees, but I do like your concept, like they get a bracelet or something, and then they'll be able to do the other things.
Yes, correct.
And still cohabitate with
Yeah.
our normal stuff. Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Jimmy.
Any other questions for Ms. Sater or Jimmy Martinez?
I'll make a motion when we're done with public comment.
Okay. Don't go too far away. Let me open this up for public comment, please. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Anybody wishing to speak on this? Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump Tonapaw on the phone, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion, please.
So we close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, just want to make sure. So make a motion for agenda item number 10 for the Redneck Pool and Barbecue for the July 4th.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Okay. There's no further discussion from the Commission. I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Everybody aye.
Number 10 passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Sater, for everything you do here in Perump in Nye County. And don't go too far away because number 11 is next.
Item 11, 10 a.m. timed item for possible action, public hearing, discussion, and deliberation to issue an outdoor festival license to Kelly Sater for the Perump Balloon Festival to be held April 12 through the 14th, 2024 at Petreck Park located at 150 North Highway 160, Perump, Nevada.
Kelly Sater, S-A-T-E-R. I had got word that the previous person hosting the balloon festival was not going to be hosting it this next year. So I wanted to kind of take the opportunity to host it myself through my nonprofit and make sure that the, you know, it's been going on in this community for so many years, and I would hate to just see it disappear like that. So that's why, again, I talked with Courtney and Jimmy in the park and discussed, you know, getting help from them to help host this one, as I've not hosted one this big before. But I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do with it and continue the tradition in the town.
Thank you. Yes.
Sater, are you going to be using the arena facilities?
The arena, no.
Okay. Thank you. We are going to put a block, I swear on this, that us, if you've gone before the arena advisory committee, so that we know that they've had a chance for their input in the future. I hope we have a different form. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
And Ms. Sater, do you know, does this event, the scheduled event, conflict with anything else that's scheduled at the park for that?
As far as I know, it does not. I had checked with Courtney at the park on their calendar, and she said it was available.
Very good. Thank you.
It's usually the slot, just about when we have this event anyway, so.
Yeah.
Very good. We watched you do the chili cook-off, so I mean, you had your T1, so that's good. So I think maybe you'll do really good on this. So we really appreciate your effort. Thank you very much.
The park still smells like chili. Okay, let me open this up for public comment. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No on the phone, Chair.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump Tonapaw on the phone, I'll close public comment.
Make a motion to approve the outdoor festival license for the Perump Balloon Fest.
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion from the Commission, I'll call for the vote, please.
Boscovich aye.
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 Jabor's aye.
Everybody aye.
Number 11 passes five zero. Congratulations on both. Thank you. Number 12, please, manager.
Item 12, 10 a.m. timed item, presentation by Misha Allen and Haley Mayo, Extension Educators, regarding the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 third quarter report for University of Nevada Reno Extension in Nye County, 10-minute time limit.
Go ahead, Ms. Mayo here in Perump, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Y'all will have to excuse me. I got back from annual leave and feeling less than stellar, but we're going to power through this for y'all.
Would you like me to start with Misha and have her just?
No, we'll be okay.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So today, Misha up in Tonapaw, the Northern Nye Extension Educator, and myself, Haley Mayo, are going to be going over extension efforts for quarter three, which covers January, February, and March of 2023. Again, what Extension does is we identify critical needs, and through educational programs and activities, we address those needs identified in our communities. And through ongoing program evaluations, we're able to use our educational programs to impact and improve the lives of Nye County residents. Extension funds cover educational programs on family and economic development, personal and family development, horticulture, agriculture, natural resources, and health and nutrition. Here in Southern Nye County, our programs focused more on 4H and horticulture. The 4H update is that we have various groups who meet regularly, including Community Club, Cloverbuds, who are five to eight years old, Dogden Horse Club, Kids in the Garden, Livestock Sewing, First Lego League Explore, which is for younger robotics, youth, bullseye shooting sports, Wordplay Cafe Club in Amargosa and Beatty, Junkyard Robotics, and our first tech challenge, Awkward Silence Robotics Team had a very successful third quarter, where in January they received first place in the Southern Nevada Regular Meat Plays, making top score of the month in the entire state. February, they placed second in the Southern Nevada League Championship, received the Connect Award and second place for the Inspire Award. And in March, they rounded out their season, getting fourth place in the state championship and receiving the Innovate Award. And we're very proud of our robotics team and all that they do and accomplish. Another thing our 4H group has been doing is monthly teen game nights. The next one is May 20th from 5 to 7 at our 4H building, which is on the corner of Dandelion and Calvada. And we have another round of Junkyard Robotics coming up. It's been hosted this spring, but due to our volunteer who leads it, it occurs during school time because she's a homeschool mom. So we're going to be hosting Junkyard Robotics on Tuesdays and Thursdays all of June and July, so that those who were unable to participate previously will be able to come and do it. And that will be advertised via Facebook. We have been advertising our clubs weekly on Facebook, and it has improved our enrollment and participation by quite a few kids who have never heard of it, and they showed up. So we're very happy about that. We did see a decrease in our third quarter office visits and telephone calls from the previous fiscal year. But one thing that we had brainstormed about that was that the weather this year was quite different than previous years, making it less than ideal for people to have horticulture questions beyond, is it going to freeze again? Can I plant anything yet?
True, true, true.
In the third quarter, we also had a very good turnout for radon month, which was back in January. We had 35 participants come for an in-person presentation from our statewide Extension radon coordinator, as well as we distributed 50 free radon test kits to homeowners here in Perump. We have 18 Master Gardener volunteers who logged 772 hours during the third quarter. And they hosted the Perump Farmers Market, which had over 4,000 walk-through visits in quarter three. And we also had the demonstration garden open, which is blooming beautifully. If you have the chance to check it out, it's gorgeous right now. And we've been offering on person or in person and online classes through Las Vegas and Perump Horticulture. And I will turn it over to Misha in Northern Nye.
You did good.
Thank you.
Say.
She did. She did great. This is Misha Allen, A-L-L-E-N, UNR Extension Educator up here in the north. We've been busy, too. And so this last quarter, my efforts continue to focus on, oh, do we still have the slides?
Yes, stand by.
Do I, am I driving now? Or?
Yes.
I am. Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Misha, please.
All right. Okay. Yeah, no, that's okay. And so my efforts continue to focus primarily on community and economic development and personal and family development with minor efforts on agriculture. And so first, we're so excited. We had, we had our second college hour career fair. And so since it's our second one, I think we can call it an annual event. And it was pretty exciting. We did almost double the number of professionals that participated. We had 136 folks come out from all sorts of different types of professions. We had the military this year, which was super exciting. We had some contractors from the test site, mines, town, and county government agencies. We really do appreciate Commissioner Jabor that you were in attendance and appreciate all of the county that participated, too. Thank you for that. We also quadrupled the number of schools served. So this year, we served Tonapaw Middle School and High School, Round Mountain High School busts their students out, Esmeralda Middle School. And we had a couple of folks, youth from online academies come and attend, too. Beatty has asked to participate next year. Amy has reached out to us and asked us how to bring a career fair to their community. And I can't guarantee that I can expand the program, but I do see that there is a need to expose our youth statewide to different career possibilities. So I'm exploring. I'm just looking into it right now, but ways to possibly bring some of it virtual. I couldn't do the whole thing, but maybe there's some parts that we could offer to other communities. So, but proud of it and proud that it's in demand. And it wouldn't be what it was without all of the professionals who came out and showed up and participated with enthusiasm. I also worked to increase access to medical services, as it is our community's number one critical need up here. And with the county's support, Nye Community Coalition's brought the remote area medical clinic to Tonapaw for the first time. My understanding is it's been in Perump for about seven years, but we brought it here, and it was really fantastic. What an incredible experience it was to see, in essence, a field hospital set up in our gym at the high school. This event was provided for free. They offered free medical, dental, mental health care to 179 patients, totaling 265 services. 218 of those were to adults, and 47 were to children. We just really did collectively, we did a really good thing for Northern Nye, and I really felt like we alleviated suffering. I did serve on multiple committees to help pull this off in three months. It's definitely outside of traditional extension work, but I framed it in a way that I'm teaching multi-agency collaboration and teaching agencies how to serve frontier communities. So we demonstrated that it absolutely can be done here, and it was well-received and appreciated by the patients. Another item kind of outside of traditional extension programming was the Mammo Van. We fell off their calendar, and their truck had been out of commission for several months, and then they had someone retire, and we never made it back onto their calendar. And I just kept following up and advocating over several months to get reestablished.
You're down to a minute of time, just so you know.
Oh, oh, my goodness. Okay, so we ended up serving 55 patients. Game night for grownups, that is a series that we just concluded. We had 117 instances of adult programming there. 4H Club is active there in Smoky Valley. 4H Club, we have multiple groups and projects, and we're proud to have one of our students selected as a pollinator ambassador, who will ultimately go on to teach others how to maintain beehives and beekeep. So for professional development on my part, this kind of resulted as just observing and listening to the public actually there in Perump with some concerns in regards to solar. And so I just really kind of sought out to find what other communities are doing and what possible options exist that might be beneficial to us. I discovered agrivoltaics. It is a shared land use concept that utilizes agriculture under solar. It's quite interesting. It's being done in many states here in the U.S. It's being done internationally. It provides, obviously, more than just energy, electricity generation, but also the ability to create an agricultural product and retain our agricultural culture to our communities. Sheep for fiber and meat, sheep do exceptionally well under solar. Really fascinating. So, but you can produce fiber and meat with them, bees, of course, for pollination and honey production, grass for livestock, and then just a variety of crops for human consumption. I am working on a grant right now that would fund my ability to go and tour some different agrivoltaic operations around the West Coast. And then if I'm able to get that funded, I would report back as to my findings. So that is all of the good stuff we've been up to for Q3, and we're open for questions and comments.
Thank you, Misha. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Misha or Haley?
Excuse me. I'd just like to thank you for doing what we asked with the advertising, and I'm glad you got a good response to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox.
Commissioner Boscovich?
I have nothing, other than thank you.
I have nothing, other than thank you.
Commissioner Strickler?
The RAM program, we heard nothing but great things. Very, very proud of you guys for pulling it off. I don't even know how you did that in three months. Thank you.
Commissioner Corboney?
Yeah, I said I'm disagreeing. I think I believe that's really great that they could pull it off in such a short time. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to uh thank Haley and Misha and your staff, your entire staff, for for what you facilitate, because what you do keeps our children off the streets and keeps them off of uh out of trouble. And in fact, you're you're teaching them great core values, life values. And it's it's evident, and it shows, especially when we meet those kids that are involved in your programs. They're very respectful. They're very kind. And uh we need more participation, right, from the kids? So please expose what you do to more of the children, try to get more participation. And um with these uh outside communities, um with the exception of Esmeralda, because they're so close proximity to uh to Nye County, they're our neighboring county. Uh, these other counties that you mentioned, Ely, that's White Pine County, um could be Eureka, any of these. Um, my my suggestion would be to to keep Tonapah as the hub and perhaps uh have them arrive via bus um during the activities, especially with whatever you're doing here in here in Perump and also in Tonapah. Uh, and that way, you keep a captive audience, you keep all of the agencies and entities that participate. There were over, what, a hundred and thirty? We were there, and Lorena was there. Uh, so many people were there uh to help support and to promote for all of these children, the high schoolers that were coming through, and even the parents that showed up. Uh, were very supportive uh and very interested and intrigued with the different agencies and what they have to offer. Uh, so my suggestion is to keep Tonapah and Perump as the as the hub. Okay? Anything else? It uh it is presentation, so I want to thank you. I hope you get well soon, you feel better, and thank you for for coming and giving us your presentation and pushing forward.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Misha.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, number thirteen, please, manager.
Item thirteen, ten AM timed item for possible action. Presentation by Sharon Black with the cotillion for success program regarding program status, outcome results, a budget status report, and future goals pursuant to the Nye County COVID relief program and policy, public assistance. Ten-minute time limit.
Good morning, Commissioner Stephanie Elliott, E-L-L-I-O-T-T. We've been in correspondence and communication with Sharon Black via email. Um, she did mention um that she was going to be attending by phone, so I've um let Jenny know that we could have the caller on the phone.
And if she's on the line, please a star nine to raise your hand. I have one hand um up, so I'm gonna unmute that line. Caller, you're unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hello, uh, this is Sharon Black. And Janice.
I I'm sorry, Ms. Black, who who was the other person? Could they reidentify themselves, please, and spell their last name?
Janice Sealy, last name S-E-E-L-E-Y.
Thank you, Ms. Sealy. Okay.
Uh, we, uh, forgive me, but I recently had a heart attack and served. I have these um kind of uncontrolled coughing attacks. But Janice is gonna...
They're breaking up really bad.
Ms. Black, you're you're breaking up. If you're on your cell, if you could try to find a hey hotspot wherever you're located, please.
Okay.
Get off speakerphone.
And and perha- perhaps jump off of speakerphone. Uh, we can hear you clearly.
You can hear me clearly?
We we will, once you jump off of speakerphone. Yes.
Well, I, okay. I I apologize, I'm not in a very good shape. So Janice will be speaking primarily for me. Can you, can you hear that?
Yes. Please, please proceed.
Okay. Our understanding is that you wanted to have uh some more explanation on our programmatic uh form that we submitted to you, is that correct?
Y- yes, we're trying to understand exactly what you provide, which you requested for the hundred and sixty thousand dollars and what was expected back to the county and the schools.
Correction, that was two hundred and sixty thousand.
All right, we uh created ten twenty-minute video lessons and a manual with a step-by-step instruction that would enable all students in Nye County from all the schools to create a successful cotillion. So that was the um our accomplishment. Um, and this was submitted to uh the uh commission in a sh- a video showcase so that it could be disseminated to every school in Nye County.
So who do we verify with that we have received such documents? I actually thought we were going to receive something, a hard disk, so we could disseminate ourselves. Is there someone within our um staff that has Sutton's shaking his head?
Yes.
So we're, we have received ten twenty-minute videos, is that correct? Manager, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And and uh the the manual explains in great detail exactly how the nomination process works so that this, the important part of this program, which um as Deborah Strickland, Commissioner Strickland said, we were a launching, Nye County was a launching pad for this important program. And it targeted at fourth graders with the following year as they are fifth graders, they become mentors for the fourth graders. Um, the importance of this is not that one person leads it, but that it is sustainable in the, and the largest accomplishment here is that it is a production and can be used for thousands and thousands of students over many years. Where manners and etiquette do not go out of style, all we need to do with the program is add a dance instructor each year. So, and you have in uh, there's kind of, you've got a county treasure with sharing crisps and the silver, is it the Silver Step Club or the Silver?
Silver Tappers.
The tappers, okay. Oh, so with those silver tappers, um, there are so many people in your communities who have done some ballroom dancing because we use, we use ballroom dancing as as part of the program. And that the students, uh, I know that there are four commissioners sitting there who were at the graduation ceremony. And the the culmination of seeing these students being able to introduce themselves, and I'm choking. And then uh go ahead and and demonstrate to their parents and the rest of the audience uh what they have learned. Each of the ten uh lessons that we presented onsite there, uh, they had manners and respect instilled in them, and then they had a a dance lesson portion of uh their onsite lessons.
Through the, through the chair.
Yes, hold on, Ms. Sealy, please.
Uh, I I guess I gotta get ahold of the county manager 'cause he's been involved in a lot of the discussion here. Are we, are we hearing all the the items that we're supposed to be getting from this activity? So what we, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So.
They...
Hold on, Ms. Sealy, please, Ms. Black, hold on, please.
County manager Tim Sutton's gonna talk.
So the initial contract with uh Cotillion for Success was was pretty loose in terms of what the actual deliverables were going to be. Uh, there were ten videos that were uh specific, uh those were required. There's some discrepancy about what the exact content was supposed to be that has been uh sent over to finance. They reviewed it, um have been in correspondence with the with with Mrs. Black. Um, and I don't believe there are any outstanding items, but uh we can verify that with with uh Stephanie Elliott.
I just have a quick question.
Hold on, please, Commissioner. Let me let um, let me have Ms. Elliott
Sure.
just uh expound on what manager just said.
We did receive a progress report that's detailing some of the information um that is being discussed today. It doesn't look like all of it was included in the backup. It's actually missing the answers. Um, but we do have a previous meeting where the same backup was provided. Nothing had been changed. We still, to date, and again, this was issued, um the grant agreement was signed back in twenty twenty-one, we have not received any financial information um from the grant applicant. Um, so we don't know how they've spent their funding. We have asked for that several times.
And that's within contract?
Yeah.
I had to step away.
That is correct.
So we're waiting for that, those documents?
Yes.
And they are aware of that?
Yes. That, yes, and we had a meeting, uh, Ms. Sealy and I, this is Sharon, had a meeting uh on the, I believe it was the twenty-fourth of of February uh with with the, on the financial. So just, um, we have created a um a magnificent program for the, to be used for many years and have done a very poor job in giving the, a monthly update on the financial, but we have many records. And we had that meeting on the twenty-fourth, and unfortunately, I had uh a heart attack on the twenty-sixth. And uh, so I've been recovering from that. And uh, but our, we are working on the uh the the financial to give to uh Jessica and Stephanie, I believe. But uh, yeah, we're we're certainly um uh working on getting all the the records. Um, and we do have records. Uh, I've just done a poor job of getting them to them uh earlier. So uh, mission accomplished on part of it and uh working on the record.
Okay, well, I appreciate you uh stating that um giving us the timeframe, but if you could, please, um, as especially where you have some assistance uh with Ms. Sealy, uh try to be compliant and get the um the requested uh financial documentation over to uh Ms. Elliott, please.
Yeah, yeah, and the goal, the goal was to have everything to the county by the end of May. And um, I may, I may not have every month done by the end of May, but I'm I'm certainly working on it, and that's the goal.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Uh, Commissioner Boskovich uh has a question.
Yeah, was there a documentary that was supposed to be submitted on this?
Yes, um, there's going to, well, yes, uh, there was a short documentary, and um I asked, uh, in, I think it was in, I I asked if somebody wanted it longer. I mean, that was that discussion, I got a communication from uh Mr. Sutton. And so I asked him how long he, how long uh he would like it. Um, and I didn't hear back, so.
I believe there was discussion that the documentary was going to be fifty-two minutes.
Yes.
Oh, no. There was never, there was never a discussion with me that it would be fifty-two minutes. Very few people would be willing to watch a fifty-two-minute documentary.
So my issue with this whole situation is that uh a lot of people who have received these funds have abused abused that and uh not prov- not produced what they said they were going to. And uh honestly, I I kind of feel like that's what I'm seeing with this. It's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars the county provided, and we got one dance and no video? That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Cox, did you have anything?
Uh, yes, um, I'd like to know who Jan Sealy is and what she has to do with this. And I'd also like to know when she entered the picture because I don't remember ever hearing her name before. Um, and what is she doing now for this?
Yeah, um, Jan was uh with me, actually. We kind of originated the whole thing before we ever spoke to you, Commissioner Cox. Uh, and in the proposal of that was submitted with you, um, there's a bio on her with her forty-nine years of teaching experience. And so she's been extremely um involved. And and you've actually met her.
Okay. I'm sorry, I I don't uh recall there ever being anything in the documents mentioning her name. Um, and um, I would add, I'd like to address the documentary. It was my understanding that documentary was going to be an hour-long minus um some kind of commercial time, which did bring it down to fifty-two minutes. And it was supposed to be a documentary done on all of Nye County so that it could be used over and over and over. Um, and we're, we only got four minutes of that. And I voted on this based on the things that were in the contract. And um I don't feel we got our money's worth, and I also have complaints coming from some of the people that you did not pay them. So I have big concerns about this whole thing. So um, I also would like to mention that the tapes that we're giving to to us, or the CDs, I should say, had things in them that we could not use, things that were not adequate for uh the use with young children hearing them. And we asked you to tank them and look at them and just extract those items. So we have a bunch of CDs we can't use. There were things put into them that were not appropriate. We did not feel for young children. So, uh, yes, the kids had a great time. They did get through this. Um, and um, we did another one, all out of the pockets of the business people here. And we still don't feel like we have justification for the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We do need to have the financials done as soon as possible, maybe within thirty days. If you can't do them, have Ms. Sealy do them, since she has become quite a part of this, and she's quite familiar with it. And um, that's my suggestion. That's what I would like to do if the board would support that. And if not, then uh we don't have them in thirty days, we will proceed from there.
And we are working on, go ahead.
We need closure. We need this done, we need...
Well, I'm afraid we may need even more than that, Commissioners. Um, we, we, I'll give you, for instance, on the twenty-second, the seventh month, on the twenty-second day, uh, Ms. Sharon Black went to the school board and asked for additional forty-three thousand dollars to finish our documentary that we were already promised. And so apparently, the documentary we got is not really what we were going to get in the first place. And now more money was requested out of the school board to complete it. So I'm not happy with that. I'm not happy with the fact that we don't have hard copies for um all the modules. We should have seventeen copies so we can distribute them. And so there are things. I think that we need closure too, but I think that action needs to be completed by Ms. Black. And I I think she's aware of that. And so I'm hoping that she will do so, so we have a viable program moving forward. Thank you.
Or feel free to return the money.
Yes. I would like to mention that, um, in case Ms. Black doesn't know this, but I assume she does, um, that part of that money ended up being spent... assume she does, that part of that money ended up being spent for this same program in Clark County. That really concerns me. This money was given to you to take care of a program here in Nye County. Not once did you ever mention spending any of this money in Clark County. And we gave you enough to cover everything, because I remember telling you this is a one-time thing while there are grants out there, to come forward with every penny you needed, so that we would have everything in the contract covered, and it doesn't appear to be that way, so...
Yes. May I, Commissioner Cox, may I just say that, first of all, there is, and I have read through the agreement recently. I had plenty of time in the hospital to go through some things, but the future documentary about the entire county, you may not know that I was in Round Mountain and got commitments from other, from the gold mine to actually fund that school. The program doesn't need to be funded, and I did ask specifically if any words that you found, you or Tina, found offensive could be, I asked, and I would be happy to remove them. I needed the exact time code, and that was when I had the IT person available, and I never heard back. So, I would be happy to exchange anything that, words that were offensive, but I needed to know exactly which ones. And so, I understand the frustration, and I am working on it. The program is, it exceeds what we hope to accomplish, and the other school that was done, I had already conducted a program there, so the money didn't come out of Nye County for Clark County, just so you know, and I can prove that to you, so...
Okay, well, I would appreciate it if you did, because when you need to do the financials, then we will see how that goes.
Exactly.
And as far as the modules, Kay LaPointe had went through those very well. I went through them, she went through them, and they made a list of the things they wanted to talk about to have them removed, but you have not been apparently...
I have never received them.
Able to do that?
I have never, I have never received any communication from Kay. And by the way, Kay was wonderful in her contributions. You can talk to her about who Jan Seeley is, because she worked side-by-side with her. The, you know, the time codes and the things I need, I'd be happy to look at those. And so, Kay was very instrumental. So, the program, the program with the dance instructor is wonderfully sustainable. I understand your concerns about Clark County, and we can address those.
Well, I understand that the dance instructor has not been paid either.
Well, I have proof that he was, but...
He says he wasn't, so all I have is his word for it. I don't think he would.
Well, I...
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Ms. Black, I want to share with you, I think it's clear, Ms. Black and Ms. Seeley, that we need those financials. We want those financials in order for you to be compliant with this money that was funded over to the cotillion. You came before us and the public three times last year and pleaded your case, and you had great support from the community and from the commission, because it was for our children.
Yeah.
And we want you to prove that it was for our children. Yes, we were in attendance to the cotillion, to two cotillions so far, one that was funded by the county and one that was almost privately funded. And so, please, I apologize for the situation. I understand that you've been in and out of the hospital, and you've got heart condition, and you're trying to take care of that, but I'm going to put gentle pressure on you right now. We need that information.
Yes.
And then we can go forward from there.
Of course. And the plan that I went before the school board, just so you know, was not to ask for additional money for this program. It was to see, to do a teach the teacher, train the trainer. So, that was a completely different thing. It would be where we could have...
We could have an in-service with the teachers in Nye County, so they could use this program, because it's designed to be just push and play, and then it's kind of like a cookie-cutter program, where anybody can institute it with just providing their own dance instructor, and everything else is available in the video modules that can be used and in the hard copy of the manual. Right now, the manual is online, so it can easily be printed for, any school can print it off that to have their own hard copy. We put it that way because, obviously, everybody is used to the technology of being able to print from their computer to a hard copy. It's pretty unwieldy to have it be only hard copy. So, easiest way to make it sustainable is to put it on and just print it from your printer.
So, I would just like to ask you then, since you made that request to the school district, did they give you any funds?
Well, no, because we, they decided, it was never programmed. What is it with in-service, Jan?
We spoke to some people about instituting it, and at the time when we asked for the funding, we were told that all of the staff development time was already spoken for, and so it was not possible to do that program.
Right.
And, yeah, so it just went by the wayside. We didn't worry about pursuing it any further, because it was not going to be able to be facilitated.
So, you never got any funds whatsoever from the school district? No funds whatsoever?
No, and we didn't, we never completed that. We just said if they wanted that program, we would, go ahead.
Yeah, we never got any funds from them.
Okay.
We had proposed it with the idea that we would go ahead and do a train the trainer.
If they want.
If they wanted it, and we were told that it would be an impossibility, because when we asked for it, it was late in the year, and the school district already had their in-service planned. And knowing that as a teacher, I would not be thrilled at all to be asked to come back for an additional in-service that had nothing to do with me.
So, we never pursued it.
So, we didn't pursue it.
I'd just like to remind you one more time that I asked you if we had everything covered, and you said yes, because I said, you know, we don't want to have to come back and ask for $10,000 here or $20,000 for there, because all of a sudden you forgot something. So, that money that was given to you was intended to do the whole program. There was no reason for you to go to the school district. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Ms. Black, Ms. Seeley, if you don't mind, please stay on the line. I'm going to open this up for public comment at this time. And please allow public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Minshall, here in Perump, please.
Pat Minshall, M-I-N-S-H-A-L-L. I'd like to know if the fourth graders in Armegosa and Beatty got this program.
Is that directed to me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, they have not gotten the program. We asked who was in charge. We filmed at Armegosa, we spoke to them, and they would get this. This program is available to them right now.
But you said, I thought you said that everybody in Nye County participated and got this program. That's not what I hear you're saying now.
Okay. In order to produce a sustainable program, it has to be created, which is what we did. And now, it can be disseminated to each of the schools.
It can't be, because there's things in there that need to be removed. But yes, when we did this, it was supposed to go to every school in Nye County, every elementary...
Let me have Ms. Minshall, if you don't mind, please proceed with your questions and then, and your statement, and then we'll circle back around and try to get answers for you, but we can't go back and forth.
You're right.
From what I'm hearing, I'm not pleased, because I don't think that it was made available. And saying that you called and talked to someone, that's not adequate for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minshall. Go ahead, sir, here in Perump, please. Yes. He's not used to being called sir.
Okay, there we go. Greetings, Chairman. Commissioners, my name is John Shewalter, S-H-E-W-A-L-T-E-R. When this matter first came to the board, I spoke against it to some of the commissioners. Unfortunately, it was approved. If I understand right, we have a bunch of fourth graders that this program was provided to. According to Ms. Cox, the DVDs that were turned over have language in them that's inappropriate to be distributed from fourth graders through a program that was supposed to teach them etiquette? Seriously? As Commissioner Boskovich said, when I looked at the newspaper article on this, they did one dance, a conga. Now, I've been in ballroom dance classes before, and I don't remember a conga being part of ballroom dance programs. When I read the article in the newspaper, 29 students, almost $9,000 per student to teach them a conga and to produce DVDs from fourth graders that can't be distributed because of inappropriate language in them? Really? And now we find out that the organizers are in breach of their contract with the county. As Mr. Boskovich said, a 52-minute documentary, and she laughs in response to it. Oh, no. Ms. Cox confirms, 52 minutes. If this ever comes before this body again, I pray that maybe you'll give Mr. Bowling the new vehicles that he needs instead of foul language lessons to a bunch of fourth graders. And if these people won't comply with the contract with the county, perhaps our district attorney's office can recover those funds through a breach-of-contract action. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Amy Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. I was here when this was first heard and was not in favor of some of the issues, but it was for the children. But listening today, I'm highly incensed that we were duped in this fashion, and I do consider it being duped. I have taken ballroom dance lessons when I was in middle school in Germany, and from what I've seen and what I've heard, this is not what's happening. This is a very, very lucrative, like Arthur Murray Dance Studios scam. To me, it's a scam. That's all I can say. They got paid, what did I hear the figure, over $600,000 in grant money? That's absurd. No matter what they were going to do with this program, but what they produced with that kind of money is absolutely absurd. I think, in my opinion, they should definitely have that money retracted. Somebody should go after it, and this program stopped immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Go ahead, Mr. Lackey, here in Perump, please.
Daralackey, L-A-C-K-E-Y. I kind of was shooting for about the same kind of money for my program to end homelessness and poverty, and I'll tell you what, I'd give you a documentary right in one week.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please?
No, Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Lilly, here in Perump, please.
Dwight Lilly, L-I-L-L-Y. If there is a breach of contract, then I don't think it's laughable that we go back and get the funds back from the people. I can think of a lot of potholes that could be filled with $90,000. So, I would ask that the chairman of the commission here look into that a little bit further. If there's been a breach of contract, that we recover the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
You're unmuted, caller. Please go ahead. Let's go to the next one, please, Janie.
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Herman Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. Commissioners, I don't know what the proper chain of authority is, but this should probably go over ultimately to the district attorney's office for a fraud investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Did the caller call back in? One more? Okay, thank you.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is Michael Locke, L-A-C-H, and I would say the same thing as the last five callers have said. At this point in time, obviously, they did nothing or very, very little in regard to the contract that they signed, and I think it's about time that the Commissioners hold somebody to their contract and have the district attorney fight to get this money back for better uses within the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Is there anybody else?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no other public comment on the phone, tone up.
Thank you, Janie.
I will close. Public comment. Yes, thank you very much, Janie. Any other questions for Ms. Black or Ms. Seeley, Commissioner?
I got nothing for them.
Okay. Ms. Black, Ms. Seeley, I think... Sorry. I think we've been very clear between the public and the commission. Please get that documentation over to Grants Administration as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me call for a seven-minute break, please, at this time.
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, you were sitting up in your chair.
I just wanted to announce that just a few minutes ago, it was advised that the verdict came in on the Cathedral murder trial, guilty on all counts, first-degree murder, first-degree kidnapping with a deadly weapon. We've now gotten convictions on all three individuals involved, and very proud of the fact that we were able to take this case on in a few months and be able to get such a successful outcome, so...
When sentencing?
Kudos to my team, very much.
Great work, DA's office. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yes, hello. When is sentencing, please, Mr. DA? Typically?
Oh, it's probably at least six weeks away. They have to do PSI reports, and it'll be at least a minimum of six weeks.
Thank you. Okay, seven minutes, please. Commissioners, please.
Settle down. We want to start the meeting. Thank you. Settle down, please. Let's start the meeting. If we can get the DA here, we'd be starting the meeting.
One minute? Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll move on. Manager Sutton. Sitting as the governing board of the unincorporated town of Perump, I'd like to open up number 15, 22, 24, 26, and 33.
Items 15, 22, 24, 26, and 33 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt, or reject the fiscal year 2023 Public Safety Sales and Use Tax P S S T Plan for the town of Perump, town of Beatty, town of Gabbs, town of Manhattan, and Nye County.
Thank you. Sheriff, Sheriff McGill, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for, uh, trailing our item. I just flew in from Washington, DC, and boy, my arms are tired. Uh, it was for the National Law Enforcement Memorial. So, um, what item is this? I'm sorry.
We have, what I've done besides the, as county commission, opened up as the unincorporated town of Perump as the governing board sheriff, and so I've opened number 15, 22, 24, 26, and 33, all of the P S S T items. So you can speak on all of them.
Okay, so the, the reason why we're here today is, and pardon me, I'm bringing it up on my email. I thought I had it, but I had the wrong one.
We have a binder, Sheriff, if you'd like.
If you would, and that way I've got the numbers. I've got the exact numbers.
Oh, God, you didn't do that to him.
Sorry, I thought I looked at this earlier and I had the right proposal, but I don't think I do. And I just happened to open it to the right page here. Okay. So what we're doing is we're presenting our P S S T spending plan for the upcoming fiscal year. As it stands now, this is for purchase of some items that we have decided we need to upgrade. And the initial one is for, this is for the Nye County, the overall. Currently, the Nye County P S S T budget or fund is at $79,969, with last year's carryover amount of $92,033. There are some things that we have recurring costs on, things like membership fees. We have a administrative technician position. There are maintenance on items. Some of those items, number one, will be, um, $31,387. And then the second item is for the previously approved and purchased stalker radar units. That's going to be maintenance cost of $8,817.36 for the year. The next item we have in the past, purchased property sealers, that's like a big seal-and-meal bag, is the best I can describe it. We have one in the Perump jail, one in the Tonopah jail. And what we do is we put the inmates' pro, personal property into those bags and seal them, they're, they're vacuum sealed. It reduces our storage space for the inmates' personal property and clothing, as well as cutting down on odor, and helps us keep from losing any individual's items of property. So like I said, those are, that was a previously purchased item. What we need is, we just need supplies for that machine. And the total for that coming out of Nye County is $141.60. The next item we're looking to do is implementing a new policy program through LexiPol. LexiPol is a nationwide organization, private company, that contracts to law enforcement agencies across the country. And what they do is they, they will take our policies and procedures, and they will revamp them based on what is best practice in the law enforcement field. Or we can purchase a package from them, which is a, basically a whole new policy manual, which again is based on best practice and is based on local, um, legislator, legislature. So it's not, the policies are not written to accommodate New Hampshire's laws. They're written to accommodate Nevada law. It's a really good program. It also provides for training, online training, and the purchase of that is going to be $4,265.95. The next item is Prepared Live software. What that is, is that's a software database that our, our dispatch center uses. And what happens when you call 911 from your cell phone, um, the dispatcher can send you a link to your cell phone from her dispatch terminal, her or his dispatch terminal, and that activates the camera on your phone. You have to positively acknowledge that for it to happen. So it's not like we're hijacking your cell phone and your camera. You are told initially that this is what it's going to do. You have to acknowledge clicking a, a link, and that opens the camera. And then the dispatcher and the responding deputies can see exactly what's going on around you when you're on the phone with us. That is a very good tool. Number one, because we, we have firsthand information. We have eyes on what's going on. Secondly, it also records for future, for evidentiary purposes. So if there's a physical altercation between two people, we can go back in that while we're on the scene and see who threw the first punch, who did what to who, and, and make our determination based on that. That software is $885. The next item is, um, upgraded preliminary breath test machines. Preliminary breath tests, or PBTs, are a small device about the size of your cell phone that is used for DUI arrests. I'm sure you've seen it on TV, right? Deputy holds it up to the individual, "Blow into this for me, keep blowing until I tell you to stop." What's happening is, when I'm holding that up to your mouth, that exhaust port is coming straight into my face, okay? There is a risk of communicable disease. Yes, COVID, really, to me and law enforcement, the bigger concern is TB. And it's amazing how many people are in our communities with tuberculosis. These new devices have an injection port that goes out to the side, which totally protects this deputy. The bigger issue here is, right now, we have about a handful of these units that are operable because the ones that we have are so old and out of date, they're broken, they're worn out. We need new ones. So that purchase is going to be $1,239. The next item that we're looking at is new body cams and car cams. The contract that we're currently, that we were under with GTAC, which is our body cam vendor, the contract has expired. And we had to do one of two things. We had to either renew that contract with GTAC, or we had to go out and shop for another company to provide the service for us. We chose to go out. We have found much better technology in the six, seven years, I believe, five, six, seven years that GTAC has been being used here. Things have changed, and really, in all honesty, GTAC has not caught up, based on the sales meetings that we've had. So we chose to go with LensLock. LensLock is a very, very similar-looking device when it comes to the body cam, still stays on the front of our shirt, it's not any different than that, but it does provide better storage, longer storage, more, more usability, more user function, and, and more easily used. The big piece of this, um, the, the big upside of this item is the car cams. Currently, we do have car cams. We have actually 360 degrees on our, on our patrol cars. But these are going to give us a camera that is, for lack of a better term, a smart cam. It's going to be able to share some information with other law enforcement agencies in our area to make our job easier. So that purchase is going to be a total of $31,998.11. After these purchases are made, that's going to leave the balance of $13,385.45 to carry over for next year. All of these items that I've just described have been approved by the town boards throughout Nye County. This is our last stop, and I think that all of this is a really good, really good step forward for our agency and for our community. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions if I can.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you very much. Can we, Sheriff Cox, any questions for the sheriff?
No, everything sounds good.
Sheriff Graboni?
Oh, it's great. We're rolling up the, the rest of the money for the year, so that's good.
Very good. We're always here to support.
Sheriff, I just have one concern. You mentioned the, the breathalyzer test. Comes out through the side, that's nice, but I think if somebody was, we'll say, contaminated, it's still airborne, and we're putting the deputies at risk. Is there something else that they can do where they can maybe step aside? I'm, I'm sure you're working on that, but that's one of my concerns is...
Well, I, I will tell you that our, our deputies are doing that in a way, in that you can hold it off to the side a little bit, but you've got to be able to see the readout as the person is blowing to make sure that they have a good, steady, constant airflow, and for the required time for the, for the device to register. And yes, you're right, it is still airborne. At this point, with these, with the, with the new PBTs, it's going to direct the airflow away from the deputy, and that's going to be some protection. But we can't protect us from everything, and it's a scary world out there, and just about anything can happen at any time. But this is a better system. Again, we need these. We, we have only a handful that are operable, and, um, so the most important thing is, is that we have the tools available to us to strengthen our DUI arrests in the field, rather than taking an individual to jail and then putting them, putting him or her on a breathalyzer and have it come back zero-zero. We don't want to do that. Now we have to look at other things. But again, the, the big thing is, with the breathalyzer, with the body cams, and with the car cams, these items are going to every deputy throughout the county. They're not individual, they're not, they're not 10 of them for Perump, and the other 25 deputies working the street don't have it. No, we, we all have it.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Let me open this up for public comment on, on all of these items, and we'll come back to you, sir. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
None on the phone, Chair.
Oh, we have public comment here in Perump. I'm surprised.
Scott Lewis, Fire Chief. I'd like to support the P S S T plan that's presented by the sheriff. It also adds benefit to the fire department because we also get those real-time images for structure fires, motor vehicle accidents, and things along those lines. It has been greatly beneficial, so we know what type of resources dispatch as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And Chief, by the way, you didn't identify yourself. That was Chief Lewis.
Yes, I 100% support the programs that were brought up here today. I believe that with the community growing as fast as it is, and the amount of criminal activity we have out there, any new tool that Joe can come to you guys with that can alleviate some of the problems we have to help the officers do a, a better job, more proficient, then that is money well spent. So please support this program, these programs, and fund them as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, of course, that was Dwight Lilly. Mr. Schuwalter?
Now, you're going to do this right, right? Identify yourself.
Greetings, Chair, Commissioners. My name is John Schuwalter, S H E W A L T E R. I like the camera idea. And my curiosity, Sheriff, is misdemeanors have to be witnessed by an officer. Will this help in the officer and all being able to witness what's going on? Will that be suitable for it? And then, secondly, the camera. How is the camera terminated that I know, because you say, "We don't want access, we don't want to, you know, hijack your phone." How do I know that that camera is terminated in that it literally is cut off and that you no longer have access to my phone? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the phone, please, Janie? Sheriff, I'll allow you to answer after.
It's okay, I'll respond to Mr. Schuwalter. The, so you're talking about the Prepared Live, you're talking about... Um, the, uh, so you're talking about the prepared live, you're talking about the camera on, on the phone. Um, you're, you're going to have to end that, that, uh, that link, that communication. So when the dispatcher tells you, go ahead and hang up, the deputies are there, uh, when you hang up, it's going to terminate that, that, um, that feed, if you will. And as far as it, uh, helping in the case of a misdemeanor arrest, I would defer to Ms. Coonsy on that.
He still has felony D on his mind from earlier today.
Anything helps.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment, Janie? On the phone, please.
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael David Garcia. Last name is G-A-R-C-I-A. I would like to, uh, address the concern that it isn't necessarily the safety before liberty we're trying to, uh, oh, we're trying to hold liberty before safety. Um, our problem here is if you look through on YouTube, our sheriff's, uh, debate from last year, uh, Sheriff Worley openly said that all FOIA requests are denied per counsel because their best interest is better than the best interest of the liberty of the people. So all these cameras, they have to be accessible for the people so we can expose the crimes that are happening underneath your commission. I've been in the courtrooms. We need cameras in the courtrooms. We're trying to expose the corruption. It's there. Y'all know it's there. Y'all been hearing about it for years and these people are having 20, 30 infractions and the sheriff can't do anything about it. It's all laid out on the last year's debate. I was there. Michael Parra, he spoke about it. Everybody spoke about it. It's time we come to realize that the problem is, is, is getting FOIA requests. Why do I have to subpoena all these body cams? I went pro se in there. I wouldn't even access, uh, procedural. I couldn't get evidence. I put in FOIA requests that were denied. But anyways, uh, it's something to think about. You know, we need to worry about protecting the people as much as we're worried about protecting this, uh, you know, all these radar guns on policy. We're not a policy enforcer. We enforce the law now. You're not with Las Vegas Metro, you're a sheriff. Okay? It's time we start acting like it. Respect the First Amendment. Thank you all. God bless. Stop taking advantage of our children.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no other public comments on the phone, Perump, Tonopah on the phone. I'll close public comment. Go ahead, Commissioner Graboni.
Make a motion to adopt the SSP, the Public Safety Sales Tax as noted for the town of Perump, item 15, and for Nye County, items 22, 24, 26, and 33.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no further discussion from the commission. I will call for the vote, please. Graboni, aye.
Aye.
Oskovic, aye.
Aye.
Numbers, uh, 15, 22, 24, 26, and 33, pass 5-0. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Number 46, please, manager.
Item 46 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve a waiver of the Nye County Code 8.04.030C that would allow Perump Valley High School to conduct a 32nd 1.4 consumer grade fireworks show at the end of the graduation commencement ceremony on the football field of the high school on May 26th, 2023.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Sophia Poulis, P-O-U-L-I-S, and I'm currently the senior class president at Perump Valley High School. Uh, before I start on my short proposal, I'd like to thank you guys for listening to me. Um, anyways, my proposal today is to approve a waiver to the Nye County Code 8.4, .04.30 in order to conduct a 32nd 1.4 consumer grade fireworks show. This, this would be taking place at the end of Perump Valley High School's graduation commencement ceremony at the football field on May 26th. Uh, we will be having the experienced manager of Blackjack Fireworks, Alexander Osborne, light these off. It will only be two cases of fireworks and they will be aerials. The performance at max will be 30 seconds. Uh, we will also have the fire department oversee this process. The sheriff's department, Nye County School District, and Town of Perump have all been notified about this proposal as well. Uh, this project is really important to me and our seniors because I just really want to give them a great send off after the ceremony. Uh, they create like wonderful memories and it will mark our next steps of life. And I have been working hand in, hand in hand with Fire Chief Lewis to make this successful and I would like to give a big thank you for all of your help, Chief Lewis. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Poulis.
Chair.
Yes.
So is this the first time Perump Valley High School has had fireworks?
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure they had a ceremony in 2018, but since then it hasn't been anything.
So. It really seems appropriate that we should have fireworks. So we are in the business of selling fireworks, are we not? So thank you, Madam President, for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
And just, just because the fire chief is standing there, um, everything is safe, right?
Yes, Commissioners, Scott Lewis, Fire Chief, L-E-W-I-S. Uh, for the record, this is 1.4 product, so this is retail grade and she has, uh, implemented a safety plan with the fire department. So we will have a presence there from both EMS and fire, and I believe the sheriff's office is also there. But from the regard of the fireworks, this is going to be ignited by a professional from one of the vendor facilities located in town. So we've reviewed the plan, we're in agreement with it, and we will be there in the event that there's any issues that may unfold.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Ms. Poulis, if you don't mind, don't go too far. I'm going to open it up for public comment at this time. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
No. And now I'm going to close public comment, hearing and seeing none, and from Tonopah on the phone. Any further questions for Ms. Poulis or the chief?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Two seconds.
I have a motion and two seconds on the floor to approve. I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Graboni, aye.
Aye.
Or is aye. Number 46 passes 5-0, and thank you very much, Ms. Poulis, for a nice presentation and good luck.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Where you going now?
Now, back to suiting as the unincorporated governing board of the town of Perump, I'd like to go to number 20, please.
Item 20 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to, one, approve, amend, and approve or reject an agency agreement with BTMC LLC, DBA Brain Trust Marketing and Communications in the amount of $72,000 for the purpose of providing public relations, event marketing, media planning and buying, creative design services, brand development, and positioning strategy through December, December 31st, 2023. Two, execute the agreement, and three, fund from 25222, Perump 35 Tourism.
Go ahead, Ms. Ledbetter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Arlette Ledbetter, Director of Tourism, L-E-D-B-E-T-T-E-R. I'd like to introduce my two compadres here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Honored to be here. My name is Kurt Ochida, spelled O-U-C-H-I-D-A. I'm the president and co-founder of Brain Trust.
And good afternoon, I guess, as well. James Horton, H-O-R-T-O-N, uh, Chairman of the Perump Tourism Advisory Committee.
Thank you. So Brain Trust has been our agency of record as of 2014, and during the pandemic, we had to do some cost reductions, so we took those, um, unkind measures that we must, must take to stay within budget. So we'd like to bring them back on as our agency of record and full-service agency. I would like to remind you that from 2014 to 2019, we were able to increase our room tax with all of our joint efforts and Brain Trust definitely had a major part of that by 117%. So it's a remarkable success story and we'd like to take another shot at it. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions for Brain Trust or our tourism director, Commissioners?
Chair, just, just so, just a note, yeah, some of us have been here for a while. I know Don and I have been through this, mine the second, hers the third. Uh, and yeah, we've seen the benefits of Brain Trust and how it's been pulled together and how things have progressed in a positive direction. So yeah, we're welcome aboard and hope we can, at least once the board makes a decision, hopefully you'll be welcome aboard.
I have a question.
Thank you, Commissioner.
On this $72,000, is that for a year or a month or six months?
Yeah, it's a calendar year of service, 12 months. It will start today, I hope, and continue for 12 months.
Okay, thank you.
And I had mentioned, we spoke briefly on break and I had, uh, talked with you about potentially you providing us some sort of a report maybe once a month or something so we can track results to make sure that we're, you know, getting the results we want.
I'll be happy to do that. I think you couldn't have a better partner than Kurt and his Brain Trust team to do that. I can bring you the report and it's actually, um, uh, quite a positive moment, I think you'll see. It's inspiring as, as Commissioner Strickland said, we need to be inspired.
Thanks, thanks.
Well, just, just real quick, I mean, based on the last meeting we just had, the results are there. I mean, we've, we've seen things happening here in a very positive and benefit way. So, yeah.
And we have a lot of.
That data's available, so we should be able to provide it anytime.
Yes, we can. We have a lot of new and exciting things. I think Kurt's pleased to just hear even in this meeting what's taking place with the balloon festival, the Fourth of July festival. There's a lot going on and a lot of events to promote. They provide, like I said, an agency of record, all encompassing, all encompassing services. We have never left Brain Trust, we just reduced our services.
Gotcha. Um, one of our concerns that we have, has come to our attention lately is our Lakeview Golf Course, and we're really wanting to put some focus on that, some highlights on that moving forward, please.
We are on it.
I know.
If, if you heard.
You had a recent meeting, I think you had a meeting yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah, after Commissioner Cox and I met with, uh, with Mr. Opec last week, so.
It's one of the first things I mentioned to Kurt this morning.
Well, he looks excited, like he can't wait to get started.
He's like that.
How can we turn him down?
Well, but it sounds like.
Like he likes his job.
He's, as you said, never left and he's been continuously helping Perump and Nye County.
Absolutely, on a much smaller scale due to the pandemic.
Yes. Welcome back. Yes. No other questions? Let me open it up for public comment. Did, did you want to speak, uh, Honey? Before, let me, let me close public comment, I'll reopen it in a moment.
I apologize for that. Honey Strozi, S-T-R-O-Z-Z-I for the record. It was my understanding that this was going to be backdated to January 1st, 2023. However, Arlette is requesting that the begin date is today, which will continue into 2024. Um, so the contract on hand states something different.
I want in our backup.
To clarify for the record, please.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be able to amend if that's the direction we're going. Thank you, Ms. Strozi, for that clarification. Okay, let me open this up for public comment at this time. Go ahead, Mr. Lilly, here in Perump, please.
Yes, Dwight Lilly, L-I-O-L-Y. Well, I'm glad to see you guys up here proposing to do promoting of our town here, but just speaking as a resident here, I've, I don't think I'm aware of any brand, see, what's it say here? It says, "Brand Development, Positioning Strategy, Creative Design Services," that's gone along with promoting any tourism events here. Uh, one of the issues that I've heard brought up was that they thought that the, people have thought that the winery was over-promoted in favor, favor of the winery rather than other organizations. So I don't see a presentation here where anything in the back, background has shown where our brand has been developed, whatever that is, or what we're, where the positioning, the strategy is for developing tourism and bringing business into the town of Trump, Perump. So I guess as a member of the public, I'm at a loss here, and $72,000 is a lot of money. I don't want to see $72,000 spent simply promoting a golf course that's never really gone anywhere anyway. I would rather see what's, what's the plan? Show, show us what the plan is here. Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Golf course was just one of the items, it's not the item.
Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
It's Amy Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. Um, back in early 2000s, um, I had a program called Microsoft Publisher, and I created a lot of webpages with that. I even got to use meta tags that would point certain searches that people put into the URL to point directly to that webpage, which brings me to our talented IT department. We have a department that's fully capable of doing all of this if they work with the Tourism Board and the, and the commissioners on what they want done to bring people to this valley. And they can work with, uh, the Tourism Board, that can work with all of the other avenues and venues to bring more tourism to this county. Um, one thing I've never heard mentioned are all the people that come here to see the, uh, um, the desert. They want to go out to Death Valley in the summertime from all over the world, and I've never seen that promoted. And like Dwight mentioned, um, I don't know what they're, uh, talking about when they say brand. I don't know what the presentation would be, but this is something, in my opinion, you can give that money to the IT department and the Tourism Board to create these programs that are more, uh, refined to our needs and, and the request of the Commissioners. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Perump, Tonopah, close public comment at this time.
Chair, um, I'd like to point out that Honey's absolutely correct that our contract under 4E does state January 1st to December 31st. So in making, making a motion, I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. That its calendar year should start this month and end.
The 16th of May. So in order to try to, and I don't want to make this meeting forever, but I, you know, you heard some of the comments that you heard. Um, I know that there's a lot more to this than, than what was just said. Uh, I would suggest that anybody who has issues or doesn't understand, come to the next Tourism Board.
Yeah. Exactly.
And get a full understanding of the whole process because it is very intense and very, very deep. It wouldn't be surprising, some of the data that they actually do and how they do it and how they cross-reference that data and how it all comes to some kind of a package that we can all understand.
Believe it or not, we do, uh, support transparency here, so everybody's allowed to go to any meeting that we have, and, uh, that's part of the problem. A lot of people don't come to the meetings and then they make up things and then they get depressed and they get mad and they, so, you know, they might find out they'd have some fun in life if they'd come and get involved. And, um, our IT doesn't do these kind of things. They actually have their hands full with just handling what we give them every month or every day, I should say.
Every minute of the day, yeah.
Every, yeah, they're, they have a full schedule and so they're, they're for maintenance purposes. They're not there to do other people's jobs. But, um, so I would suggest that any of you who don't think you're getting your money's worth need to go and express your opinion to the boards. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Horton.
On the meeting that was just brought up, um, the next meeting of the Perump Tourism Advisory Committee is on, uh, 8:00 AM on Thursday, July 13th, at the Veterans Memorial Building. That's the correct title, at the Chief DeCoppa Cemetery. It's typically the second Thursday of every other month and the, um, the agendas can be found. found on the, the town and/or county website. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, execute, and fund from two-five-two-two-two, Perump three-five tourism. The amendment being May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, to May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
For the record, Mr. Chair, that'd be paragraph five E of the proposed contract.
Thank you.
If I could hit the button, work. Second. As amended.
Thank you, both Commissioners, and thank you, Mr. DA. You threw me for a loop here because I clearly read it as under number four E. I don't see a number five. It skips from four to number six.
But it skips five, doesn't it? That's what I noted, too. It skips five.
It does, you're right, it is four E.
For the record.
Yeah, for the record.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I do have a motion and a second on the floor, and if there's no further discussion, I will call for the vote, please.
Aye.
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 For the record, the golf course that we're talking about actually was talked about this morning. The gentleman brought it up. There is some things in play, and I think they're happy to see that we're actually taking it into consideration.
I think Arlette already met with them, didn't you?
I did, duly noted. Thank you so much, Commissioners, I hope you have a lovely afternoon.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Please work harder for Perump and Nye County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'd like to go to number forty-one, please, manager, and then after forty-one, we're going to, I'm going to call for lunch.
Item forty-one for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject Nye County Resolution Number twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen, a resolution to continue with a temporary moratorium on renewable energy generation facilities.
Go ahead, Director Wagner, please.
Good afternoon. Brett Wagner, W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R. So just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, approximately six months ago, yesterday, I was before the board asking for a resolution for a temporary moratorium of six months, which did just expire yesterday. Purpose of that was to allow me to do some outreach with the towns, which I have done. We did hold workshops with each one of the town boards, that being Tonapaw, Beatty, and Amargosa, where we're seeing the majority of the applications being submitted. We have made some progress. The reason I am here before you asking for an extension is because we haven't got nailed down really what the changes are going to be. I could tell you in my thought, kind of with the idea, just because there's different concerns in different geographical areas, you know, and it's not just really as much as like Perump where there's an attitude of no solar anywhere in Perump or in the valley. There is areas that are like that within town limits, but they don't care about certain areas that are getting fairly close to the town. Because I did ask everybody to not only look at it like a, we like it or we don't, but how could we live with it, and what would we like to see done to try to address it, as they start trying to give me that feedback. So, we do have a meeting scheduled. I do not think Tonapaw's going to participate, but they were invited, because they don't have a ton of concern, just because most of the solar activity around Tonapaw right now is in another county, a neighboring county, so there isn't a whole lot we can say about it. But I do have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-third of this month, which is to include two of the board members from Amargosa and Beatty, and to kind of just circle back, now that they've had an opportunity to have some discussion with, you know, their townspeople through their boards and that, to see what they've came up with. I'm going to tell you my direction I'm going right now with what I've heard is more, pretty much a simplistic approach that would still allow us the opportunity to address specific concerns with specific locations instead of trying to come up with a one-size-fits-all for the whole entire county. And that would just be more or less a simple requirement for a development agreement, like we have for certain other things. And forget about the, you know, you got to have this buffer or that, because those details could be negotiated through an agreement like that. So, and it could be handled more on a circumstantial basis. So, that is the reason I'm bringing this back before you. I did want to point out that there is some language that we did add in working with the DA's office to not lock us into necessary a six-month, no matter what, to give us a provision to lift it, you know, if we are able to adopt an ordinance in the near future. So if you go on page five, line seven, we added a paragraph saying, "Be it further resolved that the Nye County Planning Director shall have a one-time authority to extinguish, extinguish the moratorium adopted by this resolution prior to the expiration of the six months only upon the Nye County Board of County Commissioners adopting an ordinance regulating renewable energy projects." So, that way, we don't have to wait for the cycle to get it back in front of the board if we come up with something here in the meantime, and possibly have the option to lift the moratorium if there's a desire to do so.
Knowing that you've been working on it pretty hard, I kind of figured you were going to be done before six months, so we're kind of happy to see the language.
I blame it on vacations, but I haven't had any. I've, I've tried.
All right, so this one, this, I do like what you're doing here, because there are communities that are actually encouraging solar, is what I'm hearing, and very much discouraging solar within our RP, our Regional Planning District, for instance. So I think it's a good solution, because it does give us the ability to get the ordinance written, so then you've got direction from here on out, and you've allowed this language within this resolution, so we have that ability. So, I think it's been well done, in my opinion.
So one other thing I'd like to add real quick, is that I'm also working with the DA's office, the DA himself, as a matter of fact, in looking at what parameters we have to operate in with regulations on federal land. So, we're trying to make sure we've got our ducks in a row to where whatever we come forward with, you know, we've got something that'll work.
So we're talking federal land, so we're talking BLM managed land that belongs to the state? It's okay, just checking to see.
Federally managed land, let's put it that way. Owned by the public.
Thank you, Director. So, just for clarification, you mentioned circumstantial situations, and then you brought our attention to page five, that, that we will have, well, it says the Planning Director will have a one-time authority to extinguish the moratorium within the six months, right, upon our approval? So it's not on a case-by-case, it's not on, it won't be on a case-by-case type scenario where we have some folks that, that are in a remote area, they're away from, there is no concern, there are no residents, residential concerns, they'll have to wait.
Until it was lifted.
Until it's lifted.
Yes, if it was adopted as proposed.
I, I'd also like to thank you for setting up these meetings, the May twenty-third meeting is, is where, please?
It's going to be conducted virtual, through Teams platform?
Through Teams, thank you. And, and I know that for the past few years, we've been working diligently, and you, you as well, by going to, and we have referred back other applicants, different situations, back to the respective town boards, advisory boards, et cetera, out of respect to, to what they do and why they're in place, and being our eyes and ears. So we certainly appreciate what they do, what you're doing with them, having these different meetings and workshops, so.
Thank you for that, and you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
That is kind of the other idea behind the development agreement approach, is to, that would give the towns, or, you know, would assure the towns that they would be involved in the negotiation process through those, so we can make sure that their specific concerns are addressed, you know, as best we can. So, they would definitely be involved in that process.
Yes, okay.
Amargosa is in the middle of trying to do that, so as I pointed out to you, that you might want to find out what they're actually doing.
Oh, I will, yeah. I mean, I know they're working on something, but again, it's a Nye County Development Agreement, you know, between the county and the developer, but I'm curious to see what they come up with, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, let me open this up for public comment at this time. Don't go too far away, please, Director. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Thank you. In the meantime, please step forward. Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, we can hear you, sir.
Oh, oh, okay, I just wanted to be sure. This is Michael Fender, F-E-N-D-E-R. You may have heard of me, I've been working with the solar farms issue here in Nye County, and I'm definitely pleased to hear that this MOU has, has taken place, and you're, hopefully you'll extend it longer as needed until we get enough and reliable information on how you want to go and work this situation out. I know in the past with the BLM and the contractors coming in here, they kind of running the railroad this stuff through, and, and I was seeing where this was just going to be an impossible thing to do, but I just want to compliment you for, for, for your diligence on handling this, and I would really like to give you some more feedback on that, and sometime, I know I have done those so before. And anyway, I appreciate what you've done, and please keep the MOU just as long as possible until we can actually get this thing really hammered out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fender, go ahead here, sir, and Perump. State, spell your last name, please, for the record.
Hello, my name is Chris Dancy, D-A-N-C-Y. I'm part of the Renewable Energy Development Team at NV Energy. NV Energy has a long history in the state of Nevada, and we're proud to provide safe, reliable, and affordable energy to more than one-point-three-million customers in the state. We're especially proud of our continued progress toward a clean energy future. We're moving forward with a renewable energy initiative that will transform Nevada's clean energy landscape, create thousands of jobs, and promote economic development, and position the state to achieve its environmental and carbon reduction goals. NV Energy is well on its way to achieving our state's renewable portfolio standard of fifty percent by twenty-thirty, and carbon neutral by twenty-fifty. In twenty-twenty-two, renewable energy sources generate thirty-seven percent of Nevada's total electricity generation. To continue to meet our state-mandated renewable portfolio standard, we need to develop additional renewable generation and storage assets, such as solar, geothermal, wind, batteries, pump storage hydro, and hydrogen. We're dedicated to making a positive difference to the state of Nevada and its residents by building clean energy projects for the benefit of our local communities. Our employees live and work in these same communities, and we take this commitment very seriously. We do not build projects in Nevada for the purpose of exporting power to other states. As a regulated utility company, we build projects to meet native power demands and to meet clean energy targets. As you already know, Nye County contains high-quality solar resources, which makes it a suitable location to build economical solar assets to serve the people of Nevada. We've already been working with local communities, for example, the Amargosa Town Board, to gain input on how to mitigate local concerns around future development. For example, we've learned to be cognizant of developing facilities near the important parts of communities, and also I'd like to note that we're not focused on the air, the general area of Perump. After receiving local concurrence, we plan on presenting a development agreement application to the Nye County Planning Department for negotiation, processing, and approval. In the event the moratorium is extended, we'd ask for your consideration to grant an exemption to the Nye County Moratorium for those projects that can present documented support by a local town board. This exemption would allow us to finalize a work with the local community, and then submit our application to negotiate a development agreement with Nye County. We are committed to enrich the lives of our Nevada residents and enhance the communities where we live and work. We are happy to answer any questions you may have, either now or in the future. Thank you for your time and attention today.
Thank you, Mr. Dancy. Go ahead here, sir, and Perump, please.
Chairman, Commissioners Clay Jensen, J-E-N-S-C-N, representing Canyon Mesa Solar. I, I believe I'm here to talk about one of the exceptions that was referenced earlier in the discussion. As many of you may know, we have an existing development agreement with Nye County for an eighteen-megawatt solar project to be built in the extreme south edge of the Perump Regional Planning District. Hopefully you can see that okay. It's down here just south of the front site project. This particular location is five miles away from the, the closest residential non-land owned or managed by the BLM, and, and a great distance from the town of Perump itself, though it is technically in the Perump Regional Planning District. Again, an approved development agreement, a fully entitled project there called Canyon Mesa Solar. We were in the process of preparing an application to modify the existing application for that project when the initial moratorium was, the temporary moratorium was passed. Our request here today is that, that, you know, we want to get into a discussion with the county about a modification of the existing development agreement to make those changes. Staff has taken a, rightfully so, conservative view of what an application means under the moratorium. Our view could be that, that a modification to an existing application would, might be exempt from the moratorium, but it, you know, I'm here today to request if it's possible for us to discuss this particular project, because it is an existing entitled project with a development agreement, being exempt from applying for, and, and this will go through the entire process. It will require a use permit update, it will require a modified development agreement, and we will be in discussions with the county for many meetings in many months to come about any modification to this application. We'd just like to request an opportunity to, to submit that application immediately and, and process with county staff and the commission through those changes. You'll be hearing from some of the property owners, all of the private land that this project and all the modifications would reside on are fully controlled by one land ownership group, and most of them are in attendance today, you'll hear from some of those. So there are no existing neighbors, there are no existing residential, there are no other private property owners in close proximity, and we'll, we're ready to walk through all the issues that you have with solar projects for this specific location in the form of a development agreement, and if we can't get to an approval for a development agreement, the project doesn't move forward with the modifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
My name is Kevin Emmerich, spelled E-M-M-E-R-I-C-H, and I want to comment, I'm from Beatty, and I'm in support of extending an MOU or moratorium on solar development in Nye County. NV Energy just spoke. What they're building, Greenlight Line, will not benefit Amargosa Valley, what it will do is it will enable a bunch of very large solar projects that are going to create dust issues, cut off public lands, and make the quality of life generally unfavorable in that area. A lot of the companies will come to these small communities here, and then they basically are after the infrastructure and the substations, and if the communities get in the way, they work against them. We have a lot of applications up here. We go to the BLM, we go to the senators, and we don't get a lot of response, because they've been co-opted by the industry. So the county really is one of the last mechanisms that we have to preserve the integrity of a lot of these communities. I won't make this much longer, but again, I want to thank you for the moratorium, and I encourage you to extend it, and we can get together in a meeting and can discuss the real issues that these projects actually inflict on local people. Again, we get very few benefits, we just get the worst part. Again, we get very few benefits, we just get the worst part. People like me may actually sell my property and move out in Ni County. A solar project that only creates five full-time jobs will not make up for the amount of people that leave this area, um, if the entire landscape is changed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmerich. Go ahead here, sir, in Perump, please.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Scow, S C O W. Uh, I'm the attorney for, uh, the landowners that couldn't come, there are several landowners that have come to speak related to the Canyon Mesa Solar project that you just heard Clay Jensen talk about. Uh, this, just to maintain the connection, this is a privately owned area of land, about 1,100 acres. It's been in the Wiley family, and I, I should say friends, since, uh, the 50s, and actually, I should say for Roland Wiley, in the 30s, 1930s, this has been in the family. Uh, and, uh, and as Mr. Jensen said, it's about five miles from any residential at all. The only thing near this at all is Front Site.
Which we should now call Prairie Fire, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
That's a new one for me. I, um, I understood that they bought it, didn't know they changed the name. Um, because this land is already approved for solar, we're asking that we be, uh, considered unique, which we actually are. Uh, it's the only pending approved solar project that I'm aware of that is not going forward at the present time in the way we're proposing to do, which is to add from the 18 megawatts that we have up to about 100, and, and basically use the rest of the land. We're, we're at about 220 acres under the existing project. We want to be able to use the rest of the land so it's one big contiguous solar project. And because it is a unique location, it, you know, it's, it's been referred to in the past as Cathedral Canyon. You, that's no longer Cathedral Canyon anymore, the, the Vandals took care of that, but what we do have is a place that is hardly visible from almost any place. You drive along the road from here to Las Vegas, you might see just a tiny bit of part of the land, you, this, it, it's, um, it's just not that visible. Let me read one of the eight letters that I'm going to leave with you. This is from Roland John Wiley, the son of Roland Wiley, who was the original one who set up Cathedral Canyon. Uh, he said that this, this land has been in my family for more than 80 years, and it's more than the five miles away from the nearest residential property. Because it is hard zoned for light industrial, it would allow a commercial power plant already, uh, there's already an 18-megawatt solar plant approved for part of the land adjacent to my land. And so he's saying, I'm asking to have any temporary or permanent, uh, uh, ban u- under these bills that are referenced, exclude the Hidden Hills ranch land so that my land can be used as part of an expanded solar farm. So I have these eight, uh, letters I will just leave here with you, and, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Our Attorney Scow. Go ahead here in Perump, please, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Joyce Barishman.
Please press the button for the green light.
Starting again.
Spell your last name.
Joyce Barishman, B A R I S H M A N, and I am the homeowner here in Perump, and I am not that far from the solar farm that was just spoken about. And I think these developers are just drooling to get their hands on our land. We don't have the water to support solar farms. I just visited and saw a solar farm going up in flames today, and that's not acceptable. This is what our land will look like if we allow these solar farms to be here. It will be a, a sea of solar farms. This will not benefit us, they're not telling the truth about jobs or anything else that's going to benefit Perump. I am against these projects, and there's many people here who feel the same way as I do. Unfortunately, most of these people don't know anything about these projects because they don't come to these meetings and they're not paying attention. It's going to be too late for them if you allow these projects to happen, and Perump will become a ghost town because no one will want to live here any longer, and we, again, one more thing, we don't have the water to support these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barishman. Is there anybody on the phone, please, uh, Janie? Oh, almost caught me.
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yes, this is Dee Mount, M O U N T S, and, um, a couple of things, I want to thank you for the opportunity of extending the moratorium. Um, I am wondering, though, why we can't do it for a full year to get all of the, the teeth crossed and the i's dotted, um, for planning, um, and then, like, uh, Wagner said, you know, he, he has the power one time to lift it if we need to be lifted. Um, I don't like the fact that NV Energy is there asking for modifications, I, you know, and I think, uh, Carboni said to me, well, if we give a little, we have to give a lot. So, um, I, you know, and they're still in the PRPD, so what, what good is that? We, uh, Joyce is correct, we don't have the water to do that, we've been working very closely with Helene Williams on the Water Board, um, and, uh, why not contact all of us that are in each town that are fighting solar for, I've been fighting for over two years, um, and get them, get us on there, and hey, this is what we've learned, this is what we're doing, this is what's going on. We are the front, um, uh, the booklet right now, we have all this information, uh, maps, you name it, we have it all. So I just, if you could amend this item, this agenda item, um, and go from there, but yeah, please look out for the residents here in Perump. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee Mount. Go ahead, Mr. Lackey here in Perump, please.
Darrell Lackey, L A C K E Y. Uh, I like to have things that are true and accurate, you know, in the world, especially here in government. Now, they're talking about 19-megawatt, um, solar farm, okay? Let's take that number, where'd they get that number? Did they add up the value from each solar panel? Like a 200-watt panel, and they added up so many of them to get that because that's, it doesn't put out that much power. A solar panel, if it's not pointing at the sun, does not put out the rated power. In fact, if it's within 15 degrees on both axes, yeah, it'll put out the rated power. But if it's not, it's only putting out a little trickle charge. So, yeah, when they say the number, 19 megawatts, we're not getting 19 megawatts, maybe 5% of the day, certain days, we might get close to full output on, on these, on these solar, uh, these solar farms. Now, these solar farms, again, the shade underneath them is going to stay the same, you can't grow stuff underneath them, you can't do anything like that. When you're, when you're tracking the sun, you know what you have, you know what you have. If you're just mounting them at some magical angle, not only do you have to wash them off, if you're tracking the sun, you don't have to wash off, they, they, they stay clean. So to do something purposely wrong, and everybody doesn't like it anyway, but now to, to, to push it forward, and they're all wrong, they're not pointing at the sun, they're pointing at the sun maybe 5% of the time, of the daytime, which would mean, if you look at the 24-hour period, like, maybe about 1% of the time of the actual day are they actually pointing at the sun, if you, if you add it all 365 days together. So when they say it's a 19-megawatt, uh, uh, array, yeah, if the sun is shining on them, if it's, if it's noon time in that month, when the sun is right there at those angles, if there's two angles on a solar panel, I build trackers, I know what I'm talking about, and I can demonstrate when there's, wait, as soon as you go off, the power drops right down. So to push things through and doing it the wrong way, I'm just so tired of it, but I'll never run out of motivation to show up here.
Mr. Schewalter, please, here in Perump, thank you.
Chair Commissioners, my name is John Schewalter, S H E W A L T E R. I'm not here to support or oppose this, I'm not knowledgeable enough about it. What I do understand, however, is irony. A friend of mine works out at the Devil's Hole Pupfish, uh, project that the Department of Interior runs. It's surrounded by a refuge. The refuge, one of their large project is to return that area to its natural state because decades ago it was used to cultivate cotton. That industry, we know, is gone now. And so we're pouring millions and millions of dollars to undo the damage that we so brilliantly did to that area to grow cotton. I would caution you, before we find ourselves undoing the damage that we so brilliantly do to put solar farms all over our beautiful desert, that this is given very, very thorough consideration. I don't trust NV Energy, and a, a company owned by Berkshire Hathaway, Warren Buffett, yeah, what does he do? He makes money. What I do want to see is our beautiful desert preserved and not prostituted out for some money or for some energy that we may or may not have the ability to buy, whatever. Those things are for you guys to decide, but be careful before you have to go back and undo the damage that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
This is Amy Nelson, A N E L S O N. I attend a lot of meetings, including the BLM webinars about these solar projects. And I'll tell you why I'm in favor of a, of an extended moratorium, I would like to see permanent moratorium on solar projects. And during these meetings that I attend, I learn a lot from the professionals that call in. Solar projects, number one, create a water problem for the towns that they build nearest to. They build near transmission lines, almost in clusters, because they need to get this energy transported away from us, not into us. Most of these projects are going to be selling their energy to Clark County or, or counties in California, not to us. And if there isn't a transmission line, they extend the ones that are there, uh, to put these solar projects in. They destroy the floor of the desert, the Mojave Desert has a distinct, uh, layer of what they call pouf dirt that is, um, just extremely important to the ecosystem of the Mojave Desert. I didn't know that until some ecologist and, um, um, other people that were professionals spoke up about it. Uh, the sound that these solar projects create, uh, is deafening. Uh, the people that don't understand can even hear them from 25 miles away. We're having projects right up against our county lines and other towns. I would like to see them 50 miles away from any kind of residential area, but not within any county line or any town. As far as the, um, the Wiley's, I believe, if I looked them up, they were from California. They don't really care what goes on here, and I, you know, they're, they might have bought this land in the 30s, but they've never done anything with it, they don't live here. They have no reason to cultivate that land. They bought it for a profit, and I don't think our desert is for sale for a profit. I think, uh, Brett Wagner has a pulse on the community, I think that he's doing the right thing, uh, he speaks, uh, you know, he doesn't take sides, but he just tells you what is going on and, and does a presentation that's understandable, and I am absolutely for a moratorium on renewable energy generation facilities, and Mr. Dancy, uh, is not taking into consideration of what happens to these panels when they no longer work. The job, uh, they create is not that much, but it does take away millions and millions and millions of water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Go ahead, ma'am, here in Perump, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, my name is Mary Christensen, C H R I S T E N S E N. We're involved with CMS Project, and I'm a landowner as well. Um, I have some land that's already approved for solar, I have other land that is nearby that I would like to have used for solar that is already approved for light industrial that would allow us to have solar. We understand that you don't want to have this areas to have residential, but we are over five miles away from any residential areas. We have owned this land for over 40 years, and my grandparents have owned this land since the 30s. We do not want to lose opportunity to develop it in a way that we would want, and we're miles away from anything except for, um, prairie farms, or I believe, is that the name?
Prairie Fire.
Prairie Fire, okay. And I'm speaking as also for the Mary Wiley Trust, I'm co-trustee. I'm speaking for my brother, James Riker, R I E K E R, Lauren Williams, W I L L I A M S, and Sinthorn Riker, R I E K E R. This land has been owned, you know, since the 30s, and between my ownership and the trust ownership, and being co-trustee of the Mary Wiley Trust, we control over 500 acres. And it's already zoned light industrial and has a small, um, solar project that already has approval. And we're five mi- miles away, like I said, from any residential, and we would hate to lose this opportunity for, to develop the rest of our property. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Herman Lewis, L E W I S. Try to make this as fast as possible. My family member, Richard Diorio, brought me here over a dozen years ago and said, hey, we're going to do a farm here, we're going to, we're going to live here, we're going to get involved. And I said, live here, have a farm, I'm never coming back. So for 10 years now, I've been building a small farm, and I learned about solar by building my own, DC Solar Trailer, recommend nickel iron batteries, not being grid connected, because guess what, folks, when the grid goes down, so do you, and that's coming, and y'all know it. The next thing I can tell you is I studied the Shaw Report, and Basin 162, before the plandemic, I attended countless Water Advisory Board meetings, Water District Governing Board meetings, and I couldn't compliment our Water District Governing Board better, that we have the best board we've ever had, and the best commissioners, you know, to quote Dave Stevens, thank you, Donna Cox. But I tell you what, the BLM, or as I call them, the Bureau of Land Mismanagement, doesn't seem to care about the environment, the tortoises or anything else, they want to destroy everything around us for these solar farms. The moratorium has got to hold. Let them put this big solar farm out in the middle of nowhere, out by the test site, and for sure out of Basin 162, these approximate 10 projects that are on the, on the, on the ticket for getting in, or the, the schedule to be put through and forced down our throats will wipe out our Basin 162 water supply. I'm just afraid, and I want you all to keep track of the Assembly and the state of Nevada trying to force this down our throat the same way they have affordable housing for God knows who. Put it out in the middle of nowhere, out by the test site, and nowhere near the town of Perump or Basin 162. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, here in Perump, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Ekins, I'm co-trustee of the Mary Wiley Trust.
Can you spell your last name?
E K I N S. I became friends with Mary Wiley upon the passing of her husband and sweetheart, Roland Wiley, in 1993. They were married 50 years. Um, Mary Wiley asked that I serve as a co-trustee of her trust in about 1996, she died in 2001. Since that time, we, as co-trustees, have cared for this property, including paying all the property taxes for decades. Um, now, it's time to put this land, this privately owned land, to its highest and best use, which is solar development. This land is not in any populated area and has been previously approved for solar development. We want to be inclusive of the remaining land owned by the trust. We believe that private ownership comes with rights, and as long as we are not negatively impacting the town or the county, um, we think that it should be allowed. In fact, we believe that this is going to be a positive impact on the town and county. And, um, like I say, I, we, we are, we are attached to this land, we have put so much into it, and, um, and we want to see it put to use at its highest and best use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ekins. Go ahead here in Perump, Mr. Lilly, please.
Hello, Commissioner Dwight Lilly again here. Um, I love solar, I've produced 90.6 megawatt-hours of solar in the last 47 months. Today, while we've been sitting here, 40.6 kilowatt-hour on my solar systems, I love I love it. I've got four portable solar generators in case power goes down. I've never run out of power. So I'm all pro-solar. I'm also pro having an identity for our community, and it seems like the identity keeps getting skewed around while different forces come in here. The desert out here, a lot of people I talk to, well, we like to take our off-road vehicles out there and use it as a recreation area. We like the beauty of the desert. We like the fact that the desert has been undisturbed. We don't like the idea of people come in and throw in a solar farm, then stir the dust up and break the crust of the desert, which then you have permanent dust storms going on. We have a perfectly good area to put all the solar panels solar farms want to be. It's called the Nevada Test Site and the area over there where they wanted to pollute this. We basically have already been polluted by nuclear energy company. Now we're going to get polluted by the solar industry, but I'm pro-solar. If Deborah Strickland wants stroller, put solar panels on your house. You're producing green energy. We help the state out. We're helping max out how much percent they want for green energy. But the idea of having one solar farm, and I'm sorry for these people because it sounds like they've already somehow been to the planning department and somebody agreed to give them maybe a permits to go ahead with their program, they've invested a lot of money. This is a failure of government, of not, you know, not understanding what happens when you let one solar farm in. Now you're going to have another, 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 because it'll be me too, me too, me too, too. I've already heard the discussions, all the way up, basically following the transmission line, solar farms. Agree to put them, because it's Nye County. Listen, we had a lot of space in Nye County over where the nuclear bombs were set off. Put your solar panels over there. They don't bother anybody. Nobody's going to use the land for anything anyway. But here in Perump, what is our identity? Are we Tiny Town, USA? Oh, wait a minute, are we solar farm, Tiny Town, USA? I don't like that. My property values get affected by decisions coming out of you guys. I don't want a tiny home next door. I don't want an apartment building next door. I certainly don't want a solar farm where I could look out the desert and say, oh, the gleam out there is not the sun. It's solar panels shining back at me, miles and miles of solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jem, hearing in Perump, please.
Eddie Jem, J-I-M. Well, anyway, this solar project, I was fighting this in 2013, I believe, with the California Energy Commission on the California side. Anyway, first of all, on this project, I want to know what's going to happen to the Native American cemetery that's there. Surprise, nobody knew, basically. That's one, one thing there that I'm interested in. You want to bulldoze it down. I'm used to it. Tonopah tribe's used to it, so. Anyway, I'll bring that up, but I love that carrot they dingle, dingle in front of you. They're going to bring jobs. Well, I'll tell you how it works. These jobs go out for contract, because I worked for a solar company. And let's say, so happens where I worked, a Florida company got a contract. They had their own crews. They didn't have to hire anybody local. They had more people than they wanted. It happens all the time. These people aren't coming from Nevada. The contracts go out all over the country. So when they say, well, we're going to bring jobs, yeah, you are, to other states mostly because its contracts are going out. I've witnessed that. And this wildlife issue, again, I worked, like I said, I worked at a solar, these turtle mitigations, they collect them, and then they threaten you with your job that if you run one over, and when you do run one over, two weeks go by, they threaten they're going to close this place down for a month, and it never happens. You come back about two weeks and say, oh, we're allowed to run one juvenile turtle over. Okay, business as usual. It happens a month later, adult gets run over. Two weeks later, come back, oh, we're allowed to run one adult over. So you got to gist how those things go. They just dump those turtles out in the middle of nowhere, like Stump Springs area where I think it was Yellow Pine did, and just dumped them out there, and they're all basically gone or dead. So that's, that's, that's your solar for you. This moratorium needs to happen. I'd like to see a permanent moratorium because these projects are not feasible. It's too hot here. It's not efficient enough. You lose a lot of efficiency when it gets hot. 90s, 98, maybe 100, somewhere in there is feasible, but when it gets over that, these projects are not producing like they should when it gets really hot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Sherri Stringer, S-T-R-I-N-G-E-R, Nye County Assessor. I'm in favor of the moratorium because I would like to know, I kind of came in late to the meeting, but has anybody talked about the tax abatement that comes along with this and the decreased taxes that Nye County receives because of GOED and allowing the solar companies to come in and give them a hefty discount on taxes? So I'd like to just make you all aware of that. Our tax dollars are not being put to the best use by giving a tax abatement to these solar companies. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Williams, hearing in Perump, please.
Thank you. Helene Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, the Chair of the Nye County Water District Governing Board. On June 13th, there will be a meeting of the board. There will be an agenda item. I personally have requested it, and we are going to talk about water in Basin 162. And the bottom line is, using the numbers of the acre feet of water used by solar projects, by solar projects themselves, will show at the meeting that one quarter, 5,000 acre feet of water of our recharge, which is 20,000 acre feet, on the 10 projects that we're facing in Basin 162, will be utilized by solar. I don't know if Department of Water Resources is going to somehow accept the usage of that portion of our recharge and give us credit for it or not. We'll have to ask. But the moratorium is crucial for this county to understand how much water is going to be used on these projects and how many projects are going to be, especially in Basin 162, where the majority of the population is for Nye County. Of course, the district does oversee the whole county, and we do ask continuously that the Commissioners send these projects to us so that we can define with them the amount of water use they're going to have, not only during construction, but also the life of the project. And that includes the breakdown of the project. So if you would please extend the moratorium as requested by the Director, I think the board would appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Ms. Williams. Did you say June 13th or July 13th for the Water Board meeting?
June 13th.
June 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At 10 o'clock in this chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Laura Larson, L-A-R-S-E-N. I have been listening to everybody speak. I think an extension needs to be done on this. In addition, I need everybody to start thinking outside the box. It's all about location. They need to sit there, and I agree with one of the callers that, that was speaking about putting it by the test site or elsewhere. It doesn't need to be near Nye County. Also, I also researched regarding the fact of solar panels. They reduce the CO2 levels. Well, there's also studies out there that stating regarding the fact that we need more CO2 levels. And it also, what is CO2 levels are used for? To growing our own food. We need to think about this. We need to look at all avenues. We need to research a little more regarding the fact of, if somebody wants to put solar panels on their house, go for it. I don't say anything about that. You do what you feel that you need to do. I'm stating regarding the fact that we need to think about outside the box. Thank you for your time. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir, hearing in Perump, please. Push the button.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian, spelled with an I, K-A-R-N, and I'm also representing the proud Wiley family. And I also have been a landowner out there for over 30 years. My property is adjacent to the Canyon Mesa Solar Project and is also about four and a half miles away from any residential. Simply, we are asking to have any temporary or permanent, under Nye County Resolution 2023-15 or Nye County Bill 2023-04, ban on future solar use, that us be excluded, the Hidden Hills Ranch land, so that we can use our land as part of an expanded solar farm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hello there, Commissioners. My name is Michael David Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A. I've been listening to it. I'm a little green in this area, but the audacity to have county officials chime in and put the economical gains over safety or any kind of environmental impact speaks for itself. But anyhow, good luck either way. Property rights are the foundation of all rights. And that includes man inherent rights. And congratulations to all the seniors and the parents able to witness their kids graduating. I guess I'll be using binoculars. Thank you so much for respecting the First Amendment. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Ms. Christensen, you've already had a public comment. I'm sorry. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I'll close public comment at this time. Director, did you have anything further to discuss?
Director Wagner, W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R. No, I did just want to address one of the callers in regard to the tax abatements. Not anything we can do about that, but that's one of the thoughts that we could, you know, possibly get some compensation for some of what we're going to lose through a development agreement. So that was one of my other thoughts with possibly moving in that direction.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion from the Commission?
I, you all know where I stand on solar. I don't like it. I don't want to see it. The reason they don't put it out in places like the test site is because they don't want to pay for the line extensions. And the reason you don't see it in Las Vegas is because they don't want it there. They say, take it out to Perump, line the, line the highway with it on both sides. And I say, it's absolute BS. It destroys the land. We don't need it. Doesn't help us. I apologize to the landowners, but that's how it is. I don't want to see it.
Okay.
Ditto.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I can do that. Motion to extend the moratorium is written.
A second.
Allowing us more time to write an ordinance so we can have a development agreement moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioners, if I could just get one little bit of clarification, please. You're, you're motioning to extend for?
Thank you, sir. Six months as recommended.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Corbani? Mended? Well, you only need really one.
I have two, two seconds.
I know you do, so I'll.
I was looking for three seconds.
Just to help you out, I'll just amend my second second.
You're not on record, sir.
Before you do your amendment, I just wanted to clarify that we're not extending the moratorium. We're continuing with a moratorium because the other moratorium expired yesterday.
All right, so I would like to restate my motion to adopt Resolution 2023-15, a resolution to continue with the temporary moratorium on renewable energies for six months.
Amended second.
Again.
Yes.
Okay, I'll amend my second second.
Thank you, Commissioners. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody aye.
And I would like the family of the Wiley's and their representatives to hold heart, give us a moment to take a breath and try to figure out what we're doing with these development agreements. We will get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 41 passes 5-0. I'm going to call for lunch at this time. Please be back at 3:20. 3:20, back from lunch, please.
I've already passed my, my half day, so I'm done.
Microphones, please.
It's much easier to remember.
We'll resume the BOCC meeting.
Thank you, Chair.
Number 16, please, Manager.
Item 16, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, appoint one member to the Perump Arena Advisory Committee from the following list of applicants, Kamaljit Singh Man, Lois Seestrunk, and Robert Tibbetts, and/or two direct staff to re-advertise for the position.
Thank you, Manager. Do we have any of the applicants in the, in here in the audience and chambers?
No, they're all at work, Chair.
They're all at work. Okay.
I can make a motion or you can take public. It's up to you, sir.
Sure.
Make a motion to appoint Robert Tibbetts for a term to end on expired January 2025.
I'll second that.
Let me open it up for public comment. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Perump and Tonopah, I'll close public comment. I have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no discussion, further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Corbani, aye.
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 Number 16 passes 5-0. Number 17, please, Manager.
Item 17, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, appoint two members to the Perump Off-Highway Vehicle Park Advisory Committee from the following list of applicants, Charles William Balu Jr., Ryan Williams, and/or two direct staff to re-advertise for the appointment.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Charles William Balu and Ryan Williams to a term expiring January 2025.
I'll second that also.
Thank you. Let me open this up for public comment. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
A chair.
Okay, hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I'll close public comment. There's no further discussion or any discussion, I will call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Number 17 passes 5-0. Number 18, please, Manager.
Item 18, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, appoint one member to the Perump Veterans Memorial Advisory Committee from the following list of applicants, Gerard and Dumont, and/or two direct staff to re-advertise for the appointment.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to appoint Gerard Dumont for a term ending by
Number seventeen passes five zero. Number eighteen passes five zero. Number nineteen, please.
Item nineteen for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to one, appoint two members to the Pahrump Nuclear Waste and Environmental Advisory Committee from the following list of applicants: Cheryl Varcallis, Dina Williamson Erdag; and/or two direct staff to readvertise for the appointment.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gerard Dumont for a term ending by January of 2025.
Second.
Okay. I'd like to open this up for public comment, please. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Pahrump, and on the phone, I'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion on that whenever you're ready. Ready?
I'm ready.
I'd like to appoint Cheryl Varcallis and Dina Williamson.
Erdag.
Erdag.
Second.
With the expiring term of, please?
Uh, January 2025.
Thank you.
Amended second.
Thank you.
Okay, let me open this up for public comment. Any public comment for number nineteen on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Pahrump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I will close public comment. No further discussion. I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Number seventeen passes five zero. Number twenty-eight and twenty-nine, please.
These are your consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Let me open up number twenty-eight and twenty-nine to public comment, please. Consent agenda items. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Pahrump, and on the phone, I'll close public comment.
Excuse me, Chair. This is Kelly in Tonopah.
Yes.
I heard a second. I heard a second, but it wasn't on the mic, so could you just clarify for me who seconded that motion?
Yes, that was Commissioner Boskovich who seconded the consent agenda items.
Thank you.
Number twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Thank you, Kelly.
He's very soft spoken.
Sometimes. At least we got to see Kelly.
Maybe, could you pull your microphone just a little closer, Commissioner? Thank you. Okay, so I did close public comment. Call for the vote, please, number twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Aye.
Aye.
Number twenty-five.
Numbers twenty-eight and twenty-nine pass five zero. Number thirty, please, manager.
Item thirty for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to reschedule the date for the Second Board of Commissioners meeting in June for Tuesday, June 27, 2023, in Pahrump, Nevada.
Motion to approve.
Second. Party time. Okay, let me open this up for public comment, please. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Pahrump, and on the phone, I'll close public comment. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Number thirty passes five zero. And for the record clarification, the meeting was scheduled earlier in June. It is now June 27, 2023 at 10:00 a.m.
It was originally the twentieth. It's now the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
So, so Kurt Wagner can fix his whatever he needs to fix. Well, he was kind of waffling between, is it the twentieth or the twenty-seventh?
Oh.
Yes.
We moved the date on you now.
Number thirty-one, please, manager.
Item thirty-one for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding a request to one, set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Bill Number 2023-08, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Chapter 9.25 titled offender registration, monitoring, and verification fees, Section 9.25.040 titled definitions, by deleting references to recurring fees, providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating thereto. And two, read the title of the bill into the record.
Chair?
So before you do that, I have a question to the DA.
Uh-oh.
Just want to make sure you were on the mic, just in case you had to say something. Knowing that he just read what he just read, do we have to read that title, that title back and do the record again?
Yes.
Unfortunately. Okay, just want to make sure.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set the date, time, and location for June 21, 2023. Wait.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh throughout this entire document. I now have to change all of my motions. All right. So, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to set the new time and date for 10:00 a.m. on June 27 in Pahrump.
And now we got to read this into the record.
Once you guys get a second, once we hear public.
Second.
Did you second Commissioner?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. I will now open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
None on the phone, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Pahrump, and on the phone, I will close public comment.
Do you want to read the record or you want us to do it? Could you do it?
Don't we do it after?
No, no. I was gonna, I'm trying to change it up a little bit.
I like it. You're gonna push it off on him? I kind of like that.
Thank you, Annie.
Bill Number 2023-08, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Chapter 9.25 titled offender registration, monitoring, and verification fees, Section 9.25.040 titled definitions, by deleting references to recurring fees, providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. The bill, the title of the bill has been read into the record, and I will call for the vote if there's no further discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
Number thirty-one passes five zero. Number thirty-two, please, manager.
Item thirty-two for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to ratify Exhibit A subdivision and special district settlement participation form allergen settlement and Exhibit A subdivision participation and release form CVS Nevada settlement as signed by the Nye County Manager on May 5, 2023, in regard to the multi-district opioid litigation.
Let's just not sign it and see what we can do with poor Manager Sutton. Let's just not ratify. What do you say? See what happens?
I'll make a motion, Chair, to ratify the manager's signing of the document on May 5, 2023.
Second.
I have to back him up because he's going to read all the rest of that stuff for us.
Thank you. Okay, let me open this up for public comment, please. Number thirty-two. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Pahrump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I will close public comment. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Number thirty-two passes five zero. Yes.
Oh, we'll get hung up on one of these.
Oh, yeah, there's a couple in here.
Come on, Ron. Don't jinx us. Number thirty-four, please.
Item thirty-four for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to issue a display fireworks event permit to the town of Tonopah for an aerial display at their annual Fourth of July event on Tuesday, July 4, 2023. This event is being held at the Joe Frill Sports Complex in Tonopah, Nevada. Jennifer Mills is the applicant.
I have a question. Why do we have to do this with all the towns, especially when they have a town board that could approve it? Is there some reason why it has to come through us? I mean, we're all adults.
No, we're not.
Is there a law or something that says they can't just do it on their own?
Our code provides that. It's approved by the OCC.
The county code.
Maybe we should change it. Because we get these all the time from people. And, you know, we have town boards out there that can make decisions. After all, we appoint them to do that.
They're actually elected, so.
Yeah, some of them are.
But other than that, I'll make a motion to approve the issuing of a display fireworks event permit for the town of Tonopah for the Fourth of July event.
Second.
Let me open, let me open number thirty-four. Public comment, please. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Pahrump, and on the phone, I'll close public comment. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Number thirty-four passes five zero. Assistant County Manager Lorena Dillinger. Number thirty-five, please.
Item thirty-five. Update on the 2023 Nevada legislative session, including Nye County priorities, impacts to counties, and actions that counties are required to take pursuant to new legislation.
We were flying.
Excuse me?
Said we were flying.
You could have gone to twenty, thirty-seven through forty and made us feel better, Chair. Oh, well.
I'll try to make it fast. Tim Sutton, S-U-T-T-O-N, Nye County Manager and Pahrump Town Manager. Glad for the opportunity to give you your legislative update for May 16. Today is the 100th day of the 120-day sessions. That means there are 20 days left with the session that ends on June 6. There were a couple of bills that continued to be introduced, which is crazy to me considering we only have 20 days left in the session, but there are several bills that were exempt from any of the deadlines that I've stated in my previous reports. So we now have a total of 540 Assembly Bills, 520 Senate Bills, for a total of 1,060 bills. That is reduced by the number that I've spoken of previously, so we have 811 bills that are remaining at this time. There have been no significant deadlines that have passed since my last update, but there is one coming up in a few days, which is May 19, which is the deadline by which all bills have to pass out of the Second House Committees. All bills reported on the last time are still alive, but I did want to respond to questions that were posed during the last update. In the last update, I was requested to provide an update on AB 303, which is a towing bill requested by Commissioner Carbone. It relates to towing of a vehicle. Existing law provides that if towing is requested by anyone other than the owner, a law enforcement, or code compliance officer, then the tow company can't charge any fees for that towing and storage of the vehicle until 48 hours after the towing. It's just kind of a weird law. This bill would remove that provision. Existing law also provides that the owner of real property can't have a vehicle towed simply because the registration is expired. So if you have a vehicle sitting out front and the tags are expired, you can't just have it towed. This bill prohibits towing companies from charging a fee for vehicles with expired registrations and also imposes penalties if they do. Lastly, this bill recognizes that sometimes people can't afford to pay for towing fees, and so they, there's actually currently what's called a hardship tariff. So if you meet certain circumstances and your vehicle gets towed, you get to pay a reduced rate that's set by the Nevada Department of Transportation. This bill limits your ability to do that to once a year. So you can't keep claiming hardship. You can only claim it once per year. So just a minor thing in that bill. And that bill is still alive. Commissioner Strickland requested an update on the population cap bill. That one is still alive. I did want to point out that there is an amendment. It doesn't really affect us a whole lot. It just pertains to school districts. SJR 4, which is the Yucca Mountain Support Bill, it urges federal government, the federal government to use Yucca Mountain for the development and storage of renewable energy. Commissioner Strickland requested an update on that. That one was heard in the Senate Natural Resources Committee on March 30. No further action was taken on it, so it died in committee. At the last update, Commissioner Carbone requested updates on law enforcement bills, and so I have a list of those that I'll go through pretty quickly. AB 211, so rather than, as most of you know, rather than participating in the social security program, Nevada public employers are enrolled in the public employees retirement system or PERS. There's also a, there's also jurors for judges, lurs for legislators, and there's a special PERS for police, fire, for peace officers and firefighters. So currently, police dispatchers are not part of police and fire PERS, and they would like to be. And so this bill is proposing to, was proposing to make them part of it, but it didn't get a hearing out of committee, so it died. So that one is no longer active. AB 301, existing law defines who is considered a peace officer. So I think a lot of times when we hear police officer, we think of just your uniformed street cop, but there are actually quite a few categories that fall into the police officer provision, including state fire marshal, the state fire marshal, investigators of the Department of Safety, game wardens, park rangers, and DMV compliance officers. So what this bill is asking to do is to expand that definition of a police officer to also include school police officers hired by a school board, juvenile probation officers, and municipal court bailiffs. So it just expands the existing definition. That bill is still alive. The next one is AB 351. This creates a deferred compensation program specifically for those who are enrolled in the police and fire PERS program. So this allow, this is for people who are close to retirement. Matter of fact, people who are eligible for retirement, and allows them to begin drawing their retirement contribution for a certain amount of time and putting it in a separate account. So if they were to retire normally, they would just get monthly payments, but this allows people prior to retirement to begin drawing that money, putting it in a separate account, and then when they retire, they'll have a lump sum payment in addition to their monthly PERS payments. So it's a, it's a pretty nice benefit. That bill is still alive. And, oh, that, so you can only do that for up to eighty-four months, which is seven years, which is still quite significant. Yeah. It does. It does. SB 83 exists, what's this one? Oh, existing law allows for certain employees to have their personal information, like addresses and phone numbers, to be redacted in the records of the local government and at the recorder's office. So some people who can currently take advantage of that are judges, peace officers, district attorneys, public defenders, clerks, court staff, recorders, code enforcement officers, child welfare workers, and other people who are subject to a lot of public scrutiny or public antagonism. So they want to not have people to be harassed, so they have that special provision. This law, SB 83, would also add non-sworn civilian workers who support law enforcement officers to the list of people who can request to have their personal information redacted. And that bill is still alive. SB 107, currently, all state highway construction projects have to be done by outside contractors. This bill is kind of an interesting one, but it allows contractors to apply for a permit to use vehicles by the state highway patrol, kind of as a traffic control mechanism. It's interesting because the vehicles aren't allowed to be operable, so they can't actually chase anybody, but they can turn the lights on and off to kind of get people to slow down as they're going through a construction zone. But that bill is still alive. And then the last one is SB 264. This one allows civilian employees of metropolitan police departments to form their own unions. And I thought they already had that right, but apparently they didn't. And so this bill creates that right for civilian officers of a metropolitan police department to form their own unions.
That's kind of odd, because I thought they did too. That's weird.
Yeah. Apparently, there's a question about it, or they didn't have that right because this bill is specifically asking for that, and the bill is still alive. That was all I had for today. I wanted to keep it brief, but I'm open to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Manager Sutton?
I appreciate you bringing those, law enforcement. It's a lot more information people don't know. And there was one, actually one in there I didn't know about, so that's good.
And Commissioners, just during the course of this meeting, there were a couple that were brought up, AB 354 and AB 355, as well as AJR 6, that were brought up by Ms. Nelson, so I'll add those to my next report. But if there are any others, either now or in the future, that you'd like me to add, please let me know.
Would the reduction, reduction, redaction of records apply to county commissioners also?
I knew you were going to ask me that, and so I looked and checked, and no, it does not apply to commissioners.
That seems kind of odd that they give them to everybody and their relatives except county commissioners, because I tried to have mine redacted a long time ago, and they said I had to go through the court to do it.
Yeah.
I guess there is another option if you really wanted to do it.
Yeah. I don't know if they just figure you all are out there in the public so much that you just kind of give up that right or what? I don't know. But that is not the right that.
If they're going to get us, they could get us on the street at any time. I don't know.
Yeah, or here, so.
Yeah. But that doesn't make sense, though, because a police officer and whatever are on the street all the time, too. I guess there is another option if you really wanted to do it.
Yeah, I don't know if they just figure you all are out there in the public so much that you just kind of give up that right, or what? I don't know, but, but that is not the right.
If they're going to get us, they could get us on the street at any time.
Yeah, or here, so.
Yeah, but that doesn't make sense, though, because a police officer and whatever are on the street all the time, too.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah. So should we make a request to throw us in there, or do you guys feel okay?
It tells you, it tells you what we're worth.
It's a little late now, because.
Too late on this, on this one. My concern, Manager, is, and you have nothing to do with this, is the flicking of the lights. Let's hit that toggle and slow people. I mean, it's very important on the highway, it's very dangerous on the side roads for the construction, for public works, for all of the workers, the highway workers and road. Very important that the people slow down, and they're very careful, and they're aware that people are in the road and they're working, et cetera. But it's almost like you drive through Red Rock and they have a dummy in a vehicle, okay? And it's just like putting up a, an owl, a plastic owl. After a couple of days, the birds figure out, oh, it's a dummy, okay? It's a dummy, is a dummy, is a dummy, okay? And I can't believe whoever brought this to legislation got it on, and it's probably going to pass where, where we need other safety measures for our employees and the people that are working on the highways and the roads. Not just flicking lights. You know, I, I don't get it.
Yeah, yeah, it's always strange to see what makes it through committees and gets, moves forward when other bills that are more important seem to just die. Yeah, like ours.
Well, thank, thank you for, any other questions for Manager Sutton? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number thirty-six, please.
Item thirty-six, for possible action, presentation, discussion, and deliberation to approve, amend, and approve or reject the program funding requests from Living Free Health and Fitness under the Nye County ARPA Recovery Plan and Policy, public health assistance, mental health initiatives in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, ten-minute time limit.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Stephanie Elliott, E L L I O T T, and we have Shelley Poero here with us today from Living Free Health and Fitness, and she's got a great program that she'd like to discuss regarding mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Shelley Poero, P O E R I O. My given name is Rochelle. Just thought I'd put that on the record. Sometimes it gets confusing. This is my first time up here, or even in here, so I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak to you. Living Free Health proposes to use one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars of ARPA mental health initiatives funding toward establishing a substance abuse and co-occurring disorders therapeutic workplace in Prump, and we'll call that Living Free Gym. The funding would pay for sixty-nine percent of the first year's estimated costs of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-five-hundred-and-eight dollars, and that's related to costs for rent, utilities, insurance, equipment, systems, and payroll. While Living Free anticipates revenue of one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars in the first year, the agency has committed fifty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars in funds previously sourced from its regular donor base and fundraising activities as a financial backup, creating a fully funded project prior to receiving a dollar of revenue being realized. I'm, just as an aside from this, I'm a firm believer in having skin in the game, and that's kind of how I like to run business, so I'm showing the county a commitment that we will make with our money, and I know this will be successful. So you're probably asking, how is employment a mental health project? We all know that mental health and medical crises, criminal recidivism, child neglect, and domestic violence are some of the more severe consequences individuals, families, and society reap from chronic relapse of substance and mental health disorders. What we may not realize is that while upwards of seventy percent of people relapse in the first three months, of those who make it to twelve months abstenance, only thirty-four percent will relapse. And if you pass the five-year mark of abstinence, only fifteen percent relapse ever again. Those are ever again kind of numbers. So while living, while Prump has multiple treatment providers, we lack sufficient longer-term community therapeutic structures that protect the investment in previous treatment episodes while promoting as many people as possible past that twelve-month, twelve-month abstinence milestone. There's evidence and anecdotal basis for this proposal. The federal government Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, has published evidence-based data that demonstrate that a recovery-friendly and supportive employment of those suffering substance abuse and co-occurring disorders results in lower rates of recurrence, higher rates of abstinence, less criminal activity, fewer parole violations, improvements in the quality of life, and a more successful transition from long-term treatment and back into the community. And that's really what we're looking at. How do we, we can treat people, but if they don't stay clean and sober for good and become productive members of society again, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's a very difficult thing. We just have that chronic recidivism and those chronic problems. And especially now so with the fentanyl crisis, we, we, there are a lot of deaths involved, more so than there were, say, a decade ago. Living Free Health has its own anecdotal evidence in supporting this data. Our existing, we have an existing therapeutic workplace that we built. It's called Living Free Cafe, and maybe some of you have been to it or heard of it. It's been in operation since April of 2022. It's in the old Seattle Fish and Chips, and we were fortunate enough to get that for a very low price, so that was helpful. So the project has helped to serve to build employees' work skills, aptitudes, behaviors, and knowledge to support lifelong recovery and enhance resilience to substance abuse and co-occurring disorders relapse, and promote the successful, and this is the big thing, promote the successful reintegration of formerly dependent persons into their families and into productive society. And just as an aside, we have eleven employees in there now. Seven of them are in recovery. Two of them are fleeing domestic violence situations from drunken husbands, should I say, and two of them are adolescents. Well, one just turned eighteen, but, but the point on employing adolescents as well is that keeping them out of trouble, because we, Living Free Health does the juvenile probation groups as well, and obviously, we see a lot of problems with kids. So just thought I'd throw that in. What is therapeutic about the workplace? The initiative serves as an important dual purpose for Prump and Nye County. It's as a rehabilitator and employee of persons recovering from substance abuse, and also as an inexpensive and accommodating avenue to all community mental health. Exercise is a well-researched, evidence-based protective factor against drug cravings, depression, anxiety, and other mental health and medical conditions. The agency will offer local substance abuse and co-occurring agencies in Prump and Nye County access to the gym under a per capita rate. I personally think that, and I know from, I'm in recovery, my sobriety date is September fifth, two thousand and one, that exercise plays a very, very important role in keeping people clean and sober, and also reducing their anxiety and depression. And there is a lot of scientific research on that. So what I want to be able to do, too, is invite those other agencies who may not be able to afford to send their, their clients to another gym to be able to come to our gym and have it be really inexpensive for them to do that. So, let's see, and the gym would also be open to the general public. So what I want to do, too, is to be able to allow teenagers of the appropriate age in there as well. This is much, about much more than a clean and sober workplace. Employees identify with the admirable and the estimable nature of work as a psychosocial tool, promoting better choices, self-sufficiency, and personal responsibility. Workforce development goals include increased resilience to relapse, improved long-term recovery outcomes, mitigate transference of substance to behavioral addiction such as gambling, sex, criminal activities, and shopping and spending, build and develop transferable skills, enhance self-confidence and esteem, reduce anxiety, instill principles of personal responsibility, self-sufficiency, and self-care, ensure the investment in previous and current treatment episodes, which I mentioned before, provide a clean and sober work environment and fellow employees as a protective factor, and that's a big factor at the cafe, that they really function as a team and they support each other. Flexible scheduling, time off, and time outs that support treatment, medical and mental health follow-up appointments, twelve-step and other social support meetings, and peer and clinical support to guide employees suffering at work, emotional mood, or crisis dysregulation. I could tell you so much about how the cafe has been such a boon to the employees who are there, but I know that's beyond the scope of this. I just wanted to thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. How many employees would you project to have? I see you're a hundred hours at eleven dollars an hour, but I'm not sure how that breaks down into the amount of employees you'll have employed.
I wanted to start with five employees, and that would cover basically that first, yeah. We started the cafe with just a couple of employees, and then we used some, well, me. Been working a lot of eighty-hour weeks last year, but myself and some of the other people that I have as staff to support getting that going and that supervision of those initial employees, just like we did with the cafe. But we wanted to start with five. We started with two in the cafe, and today we're at eleven in a year.
Tell me the location that you have picked.
We haven't picked a firm location. I have been out with Tasha Douglas, who's helping me on the real estate side of things, and Roy Mankins. So the anytime fitness place was just ridiculous, quite frankly, as far as what they wanted. It was, it was just awful. So Roy directed us to a place that is by Dottie's. It's kind of across the parking lot from Saddle West. There's about seventy-two-hundred square feet there. I think we would start with thirty-six-hundred, which actually puts our rent budget a little lower than what's on this. I also had heard that the, one of the CrossFit places had closed, and we're still trying to see if that space is available, but we could nail something down really quickly.
Okay, I'll reach out to the landlord that, right now, that had CrossFit and see if it was that one for us.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, again, you're talking about, is there some, somebody medical, somebody from some kind of a clinic or medical organizations you're dealing with that's associated with this?
Uh, no. I, I'm not sure. I mean, I just want to make sure I understand the question.
So you're evaluating people and so on and so forth. What are you using, what process are you using to evaluate these people for their mental issues that they supposedly have, to give them proper treatment to move them on?
Oh, well, we, our, our treatment, we have outpatient addiction treatment, and we're co-occurring. We have the co-occurring endorsement from SAPTA, the Substance Abuse Prevention Treatment Agency, and we have Jeremiah Ume, who is a psychiatric APRN, who sees our clients, and then some of our clients we refer out for co-occurring, but we're co, like I said, we're co-occurring capable endorsement through the state, and so we're qualified to determine what, when and whether certain people need to be moved or be seen by other, we're just having a problem right now with, with getting all the mental health counseling that we'd like, but an APRN ranks higher than any clinician that we would have anyway.
Correct. And these people mainly are probably Medicaid, and so there's obviously some way of being paid for those type of activities.
Right, and that's beyond the scope of the gym, what we.
Just wanted to make sure that, because if you're going to have those people, and they're going to be going and getting services, we need to make sure they're.
Oh, I see what you mean, right, as far as safety and those kinds of things, yes, absolutely. We've, we've had some people walk into the cafe that the staff would call me in on, or my operations manager, and we deal with those things. So it's generally, we haven't had too much trouble. We haven't, we've probably only called the police like three times in five years.
There's a spine and health management organization here that has lots of gym equipment that they use for their, for their stuff. Have you talked to them? It's the place over on Homestead, just down, down from three-seventy-two. Dr. Craig?
I, I know the location, I have not talked to them. The plan on getting gym equipment, one of our board members has relationships or former relationships with casinos in Las Vegas, and I have some relationships with alumni, one in particular who's an investment banker for Wedbush Securities, who believes that he will not have a problem getting us in the front door to some of the casinos in Vegas. The idea is that they change out their equipment for their fancy, you know, recreational facilities in those places, and we were hoping to secure some quality equipment from them for free. Well, we're a five-oh-one C three, so it would be a donation for them.
But again, if, if not, things will work out, you can check Dr. Craig out and see if he can help support you for a period of time, get you started.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we, Living Free really started with me sitting at a plastic table in my living room, and, and has grown to basically six suites, including the cafe at Mesquite and Highway one-sixty, and three sober living houses. One is that women and children's program, so, and, and, and it would not have been possible without the support of the community. The community has been very outgoing, and whenever we ask for help, we seem to get it.
Last two questions for me. Knowing this, these funds are only for a period of time, obviously, you have to turn in vouchers for it, what's your plans for the future to keep this moving?
Well, I think that we'll probably be, excuse me, we will probably be break even by the fifteenth month, but we have resources to keep going. We have a pretty deep bench as far as donors are concerned. We have the people who, I, I went to Stanford and I ran track there, not on scholarship, and so there, there are a number of people, I think, that in seeing this program and have seen Living Free would be willing to step up with donations if that were needed. Before COVID, our donation base was about a hundred and one thousand dollars, and last year it was only fifty-eight thousand, but, you know, with the economy and the stock market changing, there were some changes. But, but we, we will be able to finance it. We also have an annual fundraiser, well, it's only been once, but we raised twenty-two thousand dollars in November of last year in our inaugural Art for Recovery fundraiser, and I believe we'll be able to do about that again this year. And I'm very confident that, I'm very confident that we will not have a problem, that we will, if we have to dip in, and like the cafe, we're still, honestly, we're still not making money, but our loss, it's no longer a money furnace, okay? We're only losing about two to three thousand a month right now. I know that sounds like a lot, but we have donations. I know I have eighteen thousand and more in donations coming from an anonymous donor in Rancho Cucamonga, I'll just say that. I won't say the company name or anything. So we have, we do have a lot of support, and I have a very high confidence level, though anything can happen, right?
I did check with that landlord, and your agent has been in touch with him, and so that, I don't know of any other properties that would fit that. I just thought maybe, there was, you made me think of CrossFit, and he had one in his facility, so, anyway, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Shelley, I have a question. I think you answered my question.
Okay.
My, my concern, my concern was the, the rent for ninety thousand dollars, but, and which is, that's considerable, seventy-five-hundred dollars a month.
Right.
But you, I think you answered my question. I just need clarification, please. You mentioned you have three homes, you have the restaurant. When I say three homes, you have three homes that are facilities for the mental health.
Substance abuse mental health.
Yes. And the, the small restaurant over there on Mesquite and one-sixty.
Yes.
Does this ninety thousand, for example, projected to cover for the rents of those four establishments so far?
Oh, not at all. That, that.
This is just for the gym?
Right, and I honestly, I mean, I projected that at about a five-thousand-square-foot space, which was kind of my ideal space, and I haven't seen that. I'd seen two, two units next door to each other, the one that I'd seen with Tasha and Roy Mankins, and they're two thirty-six-hundred square foot. So I know we could start with, the way it's laid out, it's kind of more in a, like a rectangle, a longer rectangle, and I think we can start absolutely with that, and it could work like it did at Mesquite and Highway one-sixty, where that second space isn't leased, and in a six months or eight months, or whatever, when we're ready to expand, we could add that space. Yeah, so, so the rent that we were quoted, I think, was about a dollar fifty, so a dollar fifty at thirty-six, I think it was roughly thirty-six hundred square feet, is less, obviously, than, than, than seventy-five-hundred. But no doubt, I mean, I've started business, you know, the Living Free Health and the cafe before. You go, great, I'm going to save money over here, but then something unknown, unknown pops up that, you know, sometimes you, maybe the software costs more than what I was quoted, those kinds of things that might, might be different. Maybe insurance is more than I forecast, so, but, but. different. Maybe insurance is more than I forecast. So, but, but I think we're, we'll be fine, and we have the backstop money to make this work. And we will make it work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you work with the Drug Court at all?
Yes. Yes.
I thought maybe there was a connection. I've seen some articles in the paper in regards to your restaurant and the Drug Court people coming there, but I didn't-
Well, we have, yeah. So, we, we have, we, we get referred, the Drug Court refers to various providers in town, kind of deals them out, you know, which is the right way to do it. Not one agency gets all of the clients, so to speak. But we are referred clients by Drug Court. I attend Drug Court weekly staffing when Judge Wonker has it. And I've been doing that for several years. And, and yes, some of the people who are in, actually, one person who's working right now in the cafe is in Drug Court. The others are not. They're self-referals. One had really significant mental health, as well as his substance abuse. And we got him on the right track with his meds, and, and then his confidence in working in the cafe. And he's so happy. It's just wonderful to see people's lives change, and they're saving money and preparing to go live on their own. That's one thing that our agency does, is we're, we're not just trying to run people through and ring that Medicaid cash register. To me, that's worthless. That's not anything that I want to live with. My legacy is to try to, in my opinion, is to build a great place for people to work, treat people the way they should be treated, and make them successful for the long run, so that they're independent, so they don't come back. I would love to put myself out of a job. And I could just go to the gym all the time and eat. The cafe.
Or you could come and work for Nye County.
Maybe. So.
Okay. Any other questions for Shelley? Okay. Let me open this up for public comment. Okay. Don't go too far away, please. Any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted.
Amy Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. Many, many years ago, when I was in preschool, well, actually, grade school, my father was a counselor to addicts. And I learned from being around that environment that sometimes the best people for an addict to go to are people that have recovered and gone through what they're going through, someone they can relate to. And I met Shelley, I think, when Dr. Bradley was running Assembly District 36, when she first started her program. And she's done a wonderful, wonderful job for the people that live here. And I think she's a great asset. And I think funding the program, she's proven herself with the success for the, for the beginning, and for the restaurant, and for what her vision is to help people, not to make a profit, but to help people. So, I support any support that we can give to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else on the phone, please, Janie? Just a moment, sir.
No, Chair.
Let me see if there's anybody in Tonopah or here in Perump. Go ahead, county clerk. Public comment for you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that I've been in the cafe quite a few times, and when you go in there, you know that the people who are working there have, you know, are really working at improving themselves. And it's great to have that kind of level of happy, cheerful, and positive service that you don't get from people who are just doing it for a job. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, clerk. And for the record, that was Mark Kampf. K-A-M-P-F. Kelly, Kelly, I'm sure got that. Yes. Okay. Any, anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Perump, and on the phone, I will close public comment. Entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll step up to this one, I guess. I'd like to approve the $131,655 to the Living Free Health and Fitness of the ARPA funds.
Okay. Do I have any further discussion from the commissioners?
I would like to, if I could, Ms. Stephanie Elliott.
I take it we're having a little bit better luck with our grants program and collecting receipts, et cetera. And I'm sure that we can expect that there'll be a great response from our candidate for reporting back to you on grants and how that money is spent, correct?
Absolutely. We, we have a couple of grants through the state. I need to report every month to them.
That's what we'd like you to do, too, for us.
I have no problem doing that. It's easier for me.
It's easier to handle every month.
Exactly right.
Do you reconcile your bank account every month?
Yes.
No doubt.
Yeah.
I mean, we just don't let stuff like that-
No, we do. I'm very, it's just a very clean shop, and anyone's welcome any time to come in and look at our QuickBooks. You know, I really don't care. I got nothing to hide. And we're, I just run, it's, it's just really about the integrity that, that I'm trying to model. And I've always tried to do that, except, of course, when I was using, wasn't such a good model of appropriate behavior. But, but that's really what I have. I mean, for people to see, to walk the walk. So, as far as financials are concerned, I used to be a stockbroker in the 90s. I was a stockbroker and a brokerage principal. So, I have a pretty good sense of finance, have seen and worked in small companies before I started this one. And the best way to do it is always keep up with it, always pay your bills as soon as they come in, and get that just done and turned around. And even if you guys wanted, it's just like we do with the state grants, we have to put the services out first and then submit for reimbursement. I don't have a problem doing that. And it just seems, there's no problem. I, I heard that other thing earlier today, and I was like, oh, my God, I can't believe that.
Right.
Basically, you just hit it right on the head. It's the way it works.
Yeah. It's fine. We have no problem with it. Most prefer it that way. Then you can see how things are going, and I'm happy to come back and talk to you as often as you'd like.
Updates, yes.
Absolutely, because it's fun.
That is fun.
Just work through Stephanie. She's got the pulse.
And, and that would be quarterly. We'll reach out. And to answer your question, Commissioner, absolutely. We did move in the ARPA policy for a reimbursement, whereas previously with cares and the COVID, it was a check upfront and then tell us how you spent it. So, we're definitely getting a lot more response. And we've actually closed out at least a third of our small business grant programs already. They were very eager. They were doing their taxes anyways, submitted expenditures from last year, and we've literally closed out a third of those, and we're working at finalizing the last half of those. So, all of the small business grant funding has been taken care of. What I found in my experience is that the public assistance programs, they take a little bit of time to get going. As you can see, even with Shelley's program, she doesn't have a rent payment yet, so she can't submit a reimbursement. So, it is taking a couple of months for the new programs to get in gear. And then, yes, now we're starting to see some of those initial approved programs submitting for reimbursement.
Very cool.
Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Elliott, or Ms. Shelley? Give a name, Rochelle? No? Okay. I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Javor's aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Number 36 passes 5-0, and thank you for helping so many people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And just so it's on the up and up, see, I, I had books for you. This is a book I authored on how exercise and nutrition help with addiction recovery, so I'm gonna leave these here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love reading.
Is, is there an extra one for the DA?
I've got 100 in the office. I can bring more.
He's gonna confiscate mine, I think. Thank you. Number 37, please.
Item 37 for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding a request to, one, set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill Number 2023-04, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, titled Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning, Chapter 17.04, titled Perump Regional Planning District, Article 3, titled Zoning Districts, Establishment and General Provisions, Section 17.04.430, titled LI Light Industrial, Removing Renewable Energy Generating Facility as a Permissive Use, and Providing for the Severability, Constitutionality, and Effective Date Thereof, and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too. And, two, read the title of the bill into the record.
Thank you, Manager. Director Wagner?
Hello again. Good afternoon. Brett Wagner, W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R. Pretty straightforward. I mean, again, all we're doing, setting a date and time. We did have this before the RPC to get a recommendation. They did vote unanimously to recommend approval when it comes before the board. So, I'm just here to answer some questions. This is obviously just going along with the theme we've had in the PRPD, again, with the development agreement. It wouldn't really affect that ability, but it does take it out just as a permissive use as it is today. So.
And not encourage the applicant to look for light industrial because it's a permissive use.
Correct. And, and, you know, the problem with this is, again, by leaving it as a permissive use, it would leave a development agreement as a voluntary thing. So.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may, to set the time and date for 10:00 AM, Perump, June 27, 2023.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners. Let me open this up for public comment.
Want to read the bill into the rec, while we're there?
Does it matter if we vote first?
A vote first and then read.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Let me, let me open it up for public comment, please. Anybody on, on the phone, please, Janie?
None on the phone, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I will close public comment. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Javor's aye. Number 37 passes 5-0, and if you'd be kind enough to read the bill into the record, please.
Nye County Bill Number 2023-04, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, titled Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning, Chapter 17.04, titled Perump Regional Planning District, Article 3, titled Zoning Districts, Establishment and General Provisions, Section 17.04.430, titled LI Light Industrial, Removing Renewable Energy Generating Facilities as a Permissive Use, and Providing for the Severability, Constitutionality, and Effective Date Thereof, and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too.
Thank you, Manager. Number 38, please.
Item 38 for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding a request to, one, set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill Number 2023-05, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 5, titled Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.32, titled Cannabis Establishments, by amending Section 5.32.005 definitions to include affiliated businesses, and by amending Section 5.32.050, titled Medical Cannabis Establishment License Fees, Section 5.32.055, titled Adult Use Cannabis Establishment License Fees, and Section 5.32.057, titled Cannabis Consumption Lounge Establishment License Fees, by adding the language pertaining to sales and transfers between affiliated and unaffiliated cannabis businesses, and providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating there too. And, two, read the title of the bill into the record.
Thank you, Manager.
Chair, make a motion to set a time and date and place for the public hearing for June 27, Perump, 10 o'clock.
Second.
Okay. Let me open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Oh, yes, Amy Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. I really hope that everybody looks at the changes that are gonna be made for any kind of solar projects within Nye County or within Perump. I apologize because I didn't hear all of it, but I'm, those are my only concerns. I'm more concerned about those than I am about cannabis lounges. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comments on the phone, Tonopah, and Perump, I will close public comment. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Javor's aye. Number 38 passes 5-0, and if you'd be kind enough to read the bill into the record, please.
Nye County Bill Number 2023-05, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 5, titled Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.3, 5.32, titled Cannabis Establishments, by amending Section 5.32.005 definitions to include affiliated businesses, and by amending Section 5.32.050, titled Medical Cannabis Establishment License Fees, Section 5.32.055, titled Adult Use Cannabis Establishment License Fees, and Section 5.32.057, titled Cannabis Consumption Lounge Establishment License Fees, by adding the language pertaining to sales and transfers between affiliated and unaffiliated cannabis businesses, and providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating there too.
Thank you, Manager. Assistant County Manager, would you be kind enough to read number 39, please?
Item 39 for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding a request to, one, set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill Number 2023-06, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, titled Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning, Chapter 17.06, titled Cannabis Establishments, Zoning Requirements, by adding definitions for town and town board, and amending Section 17.06.040, titled Requirement to Obtain a Special Use Permit, to Include a Requirement to Obtain a Written Letter in Support of or in Opposition to a Proposed Cannabis Establishment by the Elected or Advisory Town Board Prior to Submittal of a Special Use Permit Application, and Providing for the Severability, Constitutionality, and Effective Date Thereof, and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too. And, two, read the title of the bill into the record.
Thank you.
Chair, make a, make a motion to set a time and date and location for a public hearing on June 27, Perump, at 10 o'clock.
Second.
Thank you. Let me open this up for public comment, please. Is there anybody on the phone?
No, Chair.
Please, Janie. No? Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Perump and Tonopah, will close public comment. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Javor's aye. Number 39 passes 5-0, and if you don't mind, please read the bill into the record.
A bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, titled Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning, Chapter 17.06, titled Cannabis Establishments, Zoning Requirements, by adding definitions for town and town board, and amending Section 17.06.040, titled Requirement to Obtain a Special Use Permit, to Include a Requirement to Obtain a Written Letter in Support of or in Opposition to a Proposed Cannabis Establishment by the Elected or Advisory Town Board Prior to Submittal of a Special Use Permit Application, and Providing for the Severability, Constitutionality, and Effective Date Thereof, and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too.
Thank you very much.
Item 40 for possible action. Discussion and deliberation regarding a request to, one, set a date, time, and location for a public hearing on Nye County Bill Number 2023-07, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, titled Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning, Chapter 17.04, titled Perump Regional Planning District, Section 17.04.260, titled MF Multi-Family Residential, Allowing for the Provision of a Single Family Detached Residences in the MF Zone, and Providing for the Severability, Constitutionality, and Effective Date Thereof, and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too. And, two, read the title of the bill into the record.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set a time, date, and location. A public hearing for June 27, and Perump at 10 o'clock.
Second. And I'd like to ask if we can hear from the Director a moment.
Okay.
Just thought you were gonna get away with all that.
I was liking the way this was going up until now again.
Boom, just like that. Director, there's been some scuttlebutt about how we do need just this. And so, I'm glad to see that you've brought this about, because apparently, we had, our ordinance doesn't allow for you to not have a shared wall, was what my understanding was. And we have some builders out there would like to basically even put the location of a fourplex on all four corners and have a common garage. So, I like that you're in front of this, because I just barely heard about it two weeks ago. front of this because I just barely heard about it two weeks ago, and you've already got the ordinance written, so, thank you.
You're welcome, and yeah, it is definitely to address, I hope you guys are aware, but with fire codes, when they changed, anything over two units now requires fire sprinklers, which dramatically increase the cost of the project, as well as there's, you know, not fire flow available to support fire sprinklers everywhere. So, this kind of gives another option, and then the other thing is people are wanting something more affordable, but to also give them a little bit of a privacy factor, more so than you would get with a shared wall, so, that's kind of where it came from.
Unique.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions for the Director? Okay, let me open this up for public comment, please. Anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Prump, and on the phone, I'll close public comment. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Javor's aye. Number forty passes five, zero.
Knight County Bill number twenty-two-three dash oh-seven, a bill proposing to amend Knight County Code Title Seventeen, titled Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning. Chapter seventeen point zero four, titled Prump Regional Planning District. Section seventeen point zero four, point two, six, zero, titled MF Multi-Family Residential, allowing for the provision of single-family detached residences in the MF Zone, and providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating there to. And two, nope, that's it.
Thank you, Manager. I, I know you were, you want to continue to read, but just so you're, everybody's aware, we're going to be very busy on June twenty-seventh at ten AM. Be prepared, Director. You'll, you'll be on vacation? I'm sure you'll call us from the cruise.
Chair, make a motion to set a time, date, and location for a public hearing on June twenty-seventh, Prump, at ten o'clock.
Which one, which, which number you want?
I already did it.
Commissioner?
It's all right. I told you I'm sleeping. I'm digesting my food.
But so noted, it's June twenty-seventh at ten AM. Thank you. Number forty-two.
I didn't turn the page, my problem.
Item forty-two for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four regional transportation commission budgets.
Denied. Oh. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, this item is just for you guys to approve the RTC budget. Really, really simple.
Director Bowling, please. Director Bowling.
Tom Bowling, B O L L I N G. Sorry. This really isn't any different than we've had in the past years. The only thing that ever changes on this is the pavement preservation projects part of it. All the other stuff ultimately stays the same. The intersections, gravel road maintenance, that kind of stuff. The money that we put towards those stayed the same. Yep. Nothing has actually changed. We haven't changed any fees or any, we haven't changed any taxes. No. So, it's the same numbers each, every time. Yep. That is correct. So, what's that?
I, I'm sorry, but can you explain page nine and ten to me? We've got total costs. What's the differentiation between these two pages?
One is the quarter cent, the ten-two-oh-eight fund.
It has to be used in a certain way. Is that why they're broke out different?
No, they're just different funds. They're, they come from different.
Sources, which means they have to be spent differently.
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three budget for, for the regional transportation.
Second.
Commission.
Thank you. Let me open this up for public comment, please, Director. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam? I mean, Janie, I did it again.
Not on the phone, Chair.
I don't feel bad now that I did what I did, so.
I was trying to help you and make you feel better.
That's right.
Okay? Because we miss Sam as well, but we're very happy and delighted Janie's taking care of business. So, is there anybody on the phone for a public comment?
No, Chair.
No. Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Tonopah, and Prump, I'll close public comment. I have a motion and a second on the floor. No further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Javor's aye. Number forty-two passes five, zero. Number forty-three, please.
Item forty-three for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, discuss the bid proposals received for bid number twenty-two-three dash oh-six, basin four, basin phase four, concrete improvements. Two, award bid number twenty-two-three dash oh-six, basin phase four, concrete improvements, to CG and B Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Mycon Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, or Performance Concrete LLC, in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Three, approve, amend, and approve or reject the contract with selected bidder. Four, fund from one-zero-two-zero-five roads, or five, reject bids and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project. And bless you, Donna.
Bless you, uh.
It doesn't seem to work.
Both are down.
Thank you, anyway.
Chair, can we ask a question of the Director?
Yes, of course.
There's something wrong with this room.
Yeah. Boy, they just want, a couple of these bidders are really close to each other in their prices.
Correct.
Find any differentiation besides their price? Is there anything different about what they've proposed?
No, not really. We double-checked everything that was required of them in order to put the bid in and be a responsible bidder.
Right.
And they are both responsible.
Both responsible. What do you think, honey? You see anything different going on there? Because I'll tell you what, I did not read the whole thing. Honey Strozi. Four hundred pages.
Honey Strozi, S T R O, Z Z I, for the record. All contractors that submitted proposals submitted all of the required paperwork. We did have one that came, did not submit their prevailing wage, so they were ineligible for the project, and that's why you only see three for consideration here. But, other than that, no, there are no differences, and we just had that one low bidder.
You know, going through the, the total package and then looking at the way they've laid out, how they bid specifically, some were just a little bit different in how they looked at their concrete costs versus, you know, some of the other things. Not really big differences, so. Couldn't see anything in their writing, any, couldn't see anything in their questionnaires. Everything looked almost identical, other than some experiences differences. The experience in one company versus, versus performance, performance says they're a little bit younger. Yes. Versus the other guys, so. That is true. That's basically, I mean, reading these damn things, you get to the point where you get burned out. So, Board?
So, Chair, would you like us to make a motion then take public, or how would you like to handle it?
Yes, I'd like entertain a motion before I call for public comment.
All right, so I'd like to award bid number twenty-two-three dash oh-six to Performance Concrete LLC in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Approve that selected bidder and fund from one-oh-two-oh-five roads.
Thank you.
I'll resecond it. Yes.
I heard that.
Yes.
I'm so glad you had so much confidence in me before you cut done.
For public comment.
I'll do it right.
Is there anybody on the phone, public comment, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted.
Uh, Amy Nelson, N E L S O N. I just hope that everybody's looking at these carefully so that we're not stuck doing the same thing that we did on Prump Valley Boulevard. It's really getting old where we hire these companies with these low bids to come in and do any kind of project, and then they run out of money or some other problem, and they don't finish the job or they don't do it right. So, at this point, I, for one, as a citizen, am real skeptical on any low bids like these, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Hearing is...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Honey Strozi, S T R O, Z Z I, for the record. Just in case you had any concerns, we do collect a performance bond and a materials bond in the amount of bid, so that can be used just in case we do have any issues with the contractor.
Perfect clarity, honey.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. We appreciate that. And, the concern, the concern from the public is valid because of our experience, right, driving on, on the roads, and, but I appreciate, we appreciate you clarifying that. So, hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Prump, and on the phone, I will close public comment formally now. I have a motion and a second on the, on the floor. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Javor's aye.
Javor's aye.
Number forty-three passes five, zero. Thank you. I know you had to review all of that paperwork initially, right, and then turn it over to all of us, and so thank you for doing that and doing all of these, all of these contracts.
I know, honey, had to do the same thing.
Yes.
Finally.
Yes. Well, that's who I'm talking to.
I thought you were talking, I thought you were talking to the Director, because he's over there saying, "Yeah, I did."
Well, well, we always try to have a committee or a review committee of three people.
Is the Director one of them?
I was just gonna say. Yeah, we all go over the paperwork. Me, myself, one of my techs goes.
Oh, you, yourself, and Irene?
I don't go as in-depth as a lot of them. I don't, didn't look at how long they've been in business, because a couple of these companies I've done business with.
We're, we're just teasing you, Director. No, we're not. Okay. Number forty-four, please.
Item forty-four for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, discuss the bid proposals received for bid number twenty-two-three dash twelve, Beatty Airport Automated Weather Observation System. Two, award bid twenty-two-three dash twelve, Beatty Airport Automated Weather Observation System, to American Southwest Electric in the amount of four-hundred-and-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and forty-six cents, or to Mesquite Electric LLC in the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. Three, approve, amend, and approve or reject the contract with the selected bidder contingent upon receiving the grant award from the Federal Aviation Administration for this project. Four, fund three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars to one-zero-three-four-zero grants, and twenty-three thousand dollars to one-zero-two-zero-nine airport. Or five, reject bids and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project.
Thank you. Honey, would you like to lead us off on this, or would you like the Director to?
Certainly, I can do it. Honey Strozi, S T R O, Z Z I, for the record. We had two bids on this, one from Mesquite and the other from American Southwest Electric. We have had past relations with American Southwest Electric. They have always been excellent. However, Mesquite Electric came in a little bit lower than them. Both, both contractors during the bid opening had all of the required paperwork, which was quite a bit. It's, it's not the same as our usual bid opening, so it was pretty lengthy, and, but they, they came up with all of the paperwork and their licenses were both checked, so.
Excellent.
Oh, and our recommendation is for Mesquite Electric.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you had a recommendation. Okay.
Well, you better have a recommendation, because if you add the two numbers together, it comes up to two-hundred, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, so it's lower bidder, as far as you, when you have in the, within the body of it says fund from this and fund from that, so.
Yes.
So, has there any money been laid out already? Are we spending funds already with the, I knew I was gonna get Stephanie to come up and say something.
Good afternoon again, Commissioner Stephanie Elliott, E L L I O T T, and we are talking about Beatty AWAS, so. And the answer is yes. We have already approved one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars through the county. This was approving task number four for the existing contract currently with Atkins. The good news is, if we've already allocated the amount of match that would be required to accept this portion of the contract, with the grant funds that we've recently requested, the total county match is actually only forty-one thousand, including both the actual contractor that we're looking to award, as well as what we would pay for Atkins. So, this initial contract that we've approved or task order for one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand more than covers the required match for the entire project.
So, obviously, we're still waiting for the grant, and that's the reason why we're saying everything is contingent, but we're already spending money, is what I'm hearing.
Correct, and we're not asking for any additional money to be added to one-oh-two-oh-nine airport. We already have that money allocated.
So, Atkins is working, which you're telling me. Okay.
If the grant is approved.
Oh, I got that, yeah. Very, very specific. Without the grant, we're in trouble.
Well, we just recently submitted last week the final revised application for this project. We didn't get any kickback indicating that they were stopping the grant application, which was not the case for one of our other airports. So, this one is moving forward, which is a good thing, good sign.
We, we lost one grant, yes.
Correct.
That was gab's, if anybody wanted to know.
Thank you.
So, with that.
Okay.
So, um, hang on, do I get any questions?
If you're not going to make the motion, I'll...
I can make a motion.
I was gonna make a motion, too, but I just want to make sure everybody's satisfied with what they got. Okay. I'd like to award a, the bid for the twenty-two-three dash twelve Beatty Airport Automated Weather Observation for Mesquite, I lost them somewhere here. Mesquite Electric in the neighborhood of three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. Approve the, approve the bid, selected bidder, and fund from, fund the three-hundred, three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand from the ten-three-oh, three-forty grant, and twenty-three thousand from the ten-two-oh-nine airport.
Could you add in a contingency upon us?
And, yes, and it's based on contingency.
Of us getting...
Of, of the grant.
Second, thank you.
Can we, can we lose the word neighborhood of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand?
Sorry. Hey, I like that cat a little fun in there. Come on.
Busted.
I don't want to give Mr. Boeing any more money than he actually needs.
Okay, so it's the exact amount. It's shown.
Thank you. Thank you.
Come on.
Let me open this up for public comment, please. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Tonopah, and Prump, I'll close public comment. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Javor's aye.
Javor's aye. I just want to make sure we're awake.
I thought, number forty-four passes five, zero. I thought we were like doing reruns of Mr. Rogers in the neighborhood. Number forty-five, please.
Item forty-five for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, discuss the bid proposals received for bid number twenty-two-three dash fourteen, Tonopah Runway fifteen-point-three-three Rehab. Two, award bid number twenty-two-three dash fourteen, Tonopah Runway fifteen-point-three-three Rehab, to American Road Maintenance in the amount of five, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. CR Contracting LLC in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Maxwell Asphalt, Inc., in the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-five dollars, or to Straight Pipe Painting, Inc., in the amount of five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. Three, approve, amend, and approve or reject the contract with selected bidder contingent upon receiving the grant award from the Federal Aviation Administration for this project. Four, fund three-thousand-nineteen, three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to one-zero-three-four-zero grants, and twenty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars to one-zero-two-zero-nine airport. Or five, reject bids and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project.
What are you guys talking about?
I don't know, but they should put their microphone on.
Go ahead, Ms. Strozi. Thank you.
Hello, Honey Strozi, S T R O, Z Z I, for the record. This is another FAA grant and required quite a bit of paperwork. We had a lot of interest on this one, which I appreciate. We did, however, have some of the bidders not submit all of the paperwork, and the bid bond on one of them was only at five percent, which we require ten percent, so. So, that affected some of the results here. We are recommending CR Contracting LLC in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars.
And they would look like the one that had everything in the package, so that's a good thing.
All right, I'm gonna try this then. I'd like to make a motion to award bid number twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen to CR Contracting LLC in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Approve the contract as selected bidder upon receiving the grant award from the FAA for the project. Fund from three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars to grant one-oh-three-four-oh and twenty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars to one-oh-two-oh-nine airport.
Contingent on.
Contingent.
I did that.
You did?
It said, they actually, I did not use the word contingent, I said, upon receiving the grant.
Right.
So, I will throw in the word contingent upon receiving. Thank you.
Second.
I love it. We already had signals, yeah.
Thank you.
Just kidding.
Thank you. Let me open this up for public comment, please. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Janie?
None on the phone, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment, Tonopah and Perumpin on the phone, I'll close public comment. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Jabor's aye. Number forty-five passes five zero.
Commissioner, Chairman, if I may, I want to applaud the finance team for cutting down the size of those.
Cutting down?
Cutting down the size.
You mean, cutting down the tree to support the backup?
No.
You sure?
There was seven-hundred-and-seventy-one pages on one of those. She cut it down to two-hundred.
Plus. We could've used them to stripe the runway.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. But I'm certain, I'm certain that the finance team and your team does more than just cuts down on, on paper. When negotiating and trying to get these bids out and doing, doing everything you do. So, thank you for that.
Fine job of getting everything done.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Director.
Brings us to number forty-seven? Uh, no, no. Wait a minute. No. No. General public, and it's interesting that there's no number next to general public comment. But, general public comment, please.
General public comment, up to three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on an agenda as an action item.
Is there any general public comment on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Jessica Gerling, G-E-R-L-I-N-G. Just wanted to say that you guys had a great meeting, you got a lot of business done and I'm still here with you. So, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gerling. Appreciate your patience and hanging in there for us. And I did list that as number forty-six A, by the way. Anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
The next caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, hello, my name is, yes, hello, my name is Laura Larson, L-A-R-S-E-N. I wanted to, because of the fact that we're having an invasion on our southern border and as of August of twenty-twenty-one, I noted regarding the fact to the board that they were been, with the buses dropping off over six-thousand migrants on our, in a perump. I wanted to do a request for the board to do a resolution regarding not allowing any busloads of migrants being dropped off in our county to be submitted to our governor. And I would like to do a request on that, if I may.
Thank you for your.
We would like to do a resolution. Thank you, thank you, because we don't need any migrants coming into our county and since we're already being invaded already, I think that I would send a message to our governor regarding the fact that our county is not a sanctuary county.
And we already have a resolution out there that says we are not a sanctuary county. It was approved a couple of years ago, as a matter of fact, when this all started. So, maybe you weren't aware of that, but.
Right. No, I probably wasn't aware of it, but I think that by, with the, 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 down at the southern border because of the fact that the, they're not viola, they're violating their oath of office regarding the fact of allowing these migrants coming in through buses through the southern border and, you know, allowing them to come on buses and then being disbursed throughout the entire United States, I think that also needs to be addressed as well because it is an invasion.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
I wasn't sure that she was finished, but thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted.
Ah, yes, Amy Nelson, is that me?
Yes, yes, Ms. Nelson. Go ahead.
Okay, I couldn't tell. There was a speaker at the first public comment that kind of bashed Michelle Fiori. And I hear nothing but great things about her. And my, the first thing that popped into my mind when he spoke about her not being qualified, well, I could be qualified, so I'm not quite sure what he deems qualified. But I understand from other people that she's doing a fabulous job and everybody's very happy with her. So, I'm not quite sure what his beef is, but I really like the reports that I'm getting. Another thing is a reminder of the G-Con. That's a grassroots conservative of Nevada meeting by Matt Sadler. And he's gonna have it Monday, the twenty-second at six P.M. At his business, A-Hope Veil Bonds on one-sixty. And I also want to say this. I attend every meeting that I can on, on the phone because I'm not able to attend in person. So, when I am not able to go to a meeting that starts at eight A.M., that doesn't have the ability for me to call in or to make a public comment, like the Water Board, I, I really attempt to have my voice heard because I know these issues are coming before the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners. So, I need to have my voice heard at, at whatever venue that I can use to get it heard. And like I say, I'm not always able. And I won't be able now for a good three months to go in person to any meeting. So, it's gonna be really imperative that I continue the planning meetings and the B-O-C-C meetings or any meeting I can on the phone so that I can make my public comments and be a participant. But, good meeting and I appreciate every one of you and I think we have the best staff on the planet, bar none. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
Yes, the next caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Timbo Henan, B-O-H-A-N-N. I, I wanna commend all the work that was done during the, during last week's meeting with the budget. There was a tremendous amount of work and tremendous amount of get-back for, from a lot of department heads and including Michelle, as Amy just raised just a moment ago. You know, a lot of cooperation when I heard from the department heads and making, making awareness of, hey, we have some budget issues or budget concerns and we wanna make sure that we are staying in positive with the fund balances. That's definitely something that will come up in the, the last meeting in the month as we address it. But that is definitely something that needs attention and I, I really prod, if you will, department heads, regional planning, county, county manager of looking for ways of getting new, new business in and making sure that we can extend that business and business opportunities. Same way from my, my perspective on the project that we'll work on, working diligently, trying to get this thing to completion so that we can raise money, not only for ourselves, but also for the county as well. Thank you and have a great evening. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Janie?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no further public comments, and Perump, Tonopah on the phone, I'll close public comment and turn it over to the Commissioners. Number forty-seven, please.
Item forty-seven, Commissioner Manager's comments. This item limited to announcements or topics and issues proposed for future workshops and agendas.
Commissioner Boskovic, do you have anything for us today?
Uh, the only thing I have is I would like to ask staff if somebody could check with the school district and confirm that Sharon Black's group did not receive any money from them, from the request they had made? Please. That's it for me.
And I'd like to add to that and have them check with the Clark County School District also.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carbone, I'm sorry, excuse me. Commissioner House, did you have anything else? I, I saw you pull up the list and I said, whoa, 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 whoa.
First of all, I have to ask if anybody around here happens.
My mic's not on.
Yes, I'd like to ask if anybody around here happens to know anything about Nye County getting two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for busing in the homeless out of Clark County or anywhere else.
Rumorville.
Well, that was stated on the Ian Baines Show a few nights ago.
Mr. Spinner.
Yep. Well, I told everybody he was a liar. So, if he doesn't like that, too bad because I was confronted by some very rude people over the last several days going, "You effin' little bitch. How dare you do that?" And I said, "You've known me for too many years, you know who the liar is here." And he said, "Oh, was that it?" And I said, "Yes, he's lying about everything he's talking about on his show." So, I just wanted to put it out there that if you're getting your information from this show, please come and speak to any of us personally and we will straighten you out or give the manager a call. He would love to hear from you. So, so anyway, yes, I have, um, town items versus Nye County. That was in, for an answer to Dwight Lilly stating that we need to bring the town board back. No, we don't. Direct, just, you know, I mean, I worked very hard to get rid of that town board along with several of us. And we, yeah, and we saved, we have saved millions of dollars since we got rid of that town board, believe me. And I, I really think it's, he, he's not paying attention what is going on or he would realize that we are taking care of the town and the town has more money to lose, I mean, to use than we do as a town, yeah, the town board has more money. So, we're doing good. We're not only giving them enough that they need, but we're also saving money. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the public. Oh, we lost the public works guy, right? Hmm. I just had more complaint about weeds. The golf course we talked about, it's got, he, we've got some really exciting things coming up. Deborah and I spoke with Joe and we came up with all kinds of ideas that could be feasibly make enough money to get us out of the hole we've been in because I really hate to see us go back to square one, although I called it a white elephant in the beginning and never voted for it. But that's what we needed was somebody to come in that's got some foresight and he's, he's, he's all excited that he got appointed and he's gonna work hard for it. So, anybody else that has any ideas, they might speak with him and he can add them to his list, although he's covered a lot. This one's for Amy Nelson. Today, she made a statement when we were speaking about the Sharon Black issue and she said, "We, we spent six-hundred-thousand dollars." No, Amy, it was bad enough when we spent two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. So, you're incorrect. It was not six-hundred-thousand dollars. So, I don't want the public to think we, we did that. And the cotillion was a really great thing and it's not about a dance or kids waltzing around. It's about, it's for the more lower-income kids that don't have as much opportunity in life as what most of the school kids do. And it's fourth grader, so we're starting them at a good level in their life and they're teaching them etiquette and manners and positive attitudes. It goes on and on and on. Plus, they do get to dance and that's the highlight of the whole thing. But not only that, but then next year, those, those kids work with the new kids coming in. And this year, unfortunately, we didn't have the money we were supposed to have, so it was raised from a lot of hard donations from right here in the local community and they didn't let us down. They raised something like thirty-six-hundred dollars at a cake sale. So, you know, that was, most of you might've been there, I wasn't, but. To Daryl Lackey, "Daryl, all you need to do in order to fit in here and get what you want," which I think was some grant money, "is to get a business license, you're good to go." I talked to him about it, but he's not complying. So, if anybody's wondering, that's why he's coming up here and complaining each time. Um, let's see. Oh, and this one's to the county manager. Do you know where John O'Brien's item he wants put on the agenda stands right now?
I do. He informed me that he was gonna be out for a couple of months, so I said, "That's fine, we can just put it back on when you come back and just let me know when you're coming back." And he hasn't responded back yet to that.
Okay. So, he knows that then, right?
He does. I've been texting him.
Okay. And the other one was the one with the wild horses, the wild horse and burrow item for the ordinance?
Yes, I've been corresponding with the requesters, including Ms. Lane and Net Shaw and clarifying some language and so there was a little bit of a misunderstanding as to what they wanted to accomplish with that. So, I think we have it sorted out. I did get an email from them while I was out last week, but plan to sort that out.
Okay, cause you CC'd me on most of those, so I'm familiar with that. I just didn't know if things had changed in the last week or so. Or if it, you know, so I figured I'd give you some time when you got back to probably catch up with it. Does anybody know where the squatters are at? The ones that are on that property? You know, I mean, not the squatters, but the prop, the.
Ambler. Ambler Way.
Say that again?
Ambler.
Ambler, okay.
Ambler Way.
It's not the ones I thought then.
There's more?
Oh, we have three-thousand, I mean, over three-hundred of them up on the hill, but they're squatting on BLM property mostly, well, some behind the Nugget. And they're just all over town. I was shocked. I went with my brother and sister-in-law to look for houses about two weeks ago. I'm stunned at how many more people have brought in junk cars, junk trailers. I mean, really, we gotta, somebody's gotta do something. I mean, I know you're trying, but in nice neighborhoods, they're piling, they're, they're backyards full of them and then they're bleeding it over into the front yards. And we have all these, I guess, mechanic shops opening up. And you know, like the houses are for sale next door to them and that's the end of that. Drive by, look at the house, see the cars, boom, you know, out of there. So, it's making it really hard to, to sell a house around here. I don't know what to do. I mean.
Have you, have you sat down with the Director of Planning and could tell him what's going on on those properties? So, cause I imagine somebody from his organization might wanna visit.
And there may already be some complaints made about those, but it takes so long. Maybe we need to change some laws because it takes so long to get through the process. I mean, you're looking at six months just to get started, really. And then if they don't comply, you have to go through the court system. And so, people are complaining about that and they're complaining about, you know, we cleaned off the, we cleaned off their property behind the Nugget and I guess the guy either sold the property or didn't get the hint because they're all bad and more. So, just, anyway, I told you I had a list.
I won.
Huh? You won?
Yeah.
You won? What did you win? Oh, you guys have... Am I on a time limit?
No, no, it's okay. Keep going. I lost the $200,000. It's okay.
Okay. As long as it didn't cost me. Oh, my God. Oh, Mr. Little stated he left some documents for us at the last meeting, and I don't believe I ever got a copy of those. Do you know if they were distributed? If they weren't, he could distribute what he left today and those at the same time, because there were so many things last...
You might want to talk to the DA before you say you want those documents.
Oh, I just want them for myself. I don't want to give them to the public.
You still may want to talk to him about if you want...
I like to stay informed. He's ignoring me. Oh, they mentioned something about Flagman and a picture. Yeah. Yeah, so give it some thought. It would be nice to have a picture and just hang it on a wall in the entryway or something, if nobody minds. But I'll leave that up to whoever brought it up. Was it Tom Waters that brought it up?
Tom Waters brought Ron Frazier... brought Ron Frazier up, and...
I'm the...
Commissioner Carbone brought up...
I heard that on my...
Flagman Ray.
Okay. For some reason, the meeting on May the 8th, the teleconference meeting, is not up yet on Grandicus. And they're usually not that far behind.
Which meeting? Was it the budget meeting?
Yeah, the 8th. So I don't know what happened, but I thought maybe somebody could...
We'll check on that, Commissioner.
Okay. And we got a call from the Elko County Commissioner, and I can't remember his name, but he said that they've been surveying people in the counties and the state, and that apparently they're all in agreement that we should take back our land from BLM. So give it some thought.
The county manager's already seen that documentation, and he was working with, I think, Larynda Richmond on it, correct?
So that's just something I've been throwing out there for a long time, so maybe we're going to get some support.
You might want to be careful with that. Did you hear the last proposal from Elko County? They are actually proposing to pass a law outlawing, or basically allowing, the extermination of all wild horses as a threat to their environment.
Maybe that's why they want to take it over then.
Yeah.
But it doesn't matter, because BLM's killing them anyway. It's a constant fight with them. It has been for years. And at least if we brought it back under us, we could say, "No, we don't want them killed." I know there's an issue between the ranchers and the horses, but, you know, they all got along forever. And now, you know, the last few years, it's been a big deal. I think there's a lot of money to be made there. They paid... BLM paid them $82 million one year for rounding up the horses. $82 million in their budget. Now, I don't know what they did with the rest of the money, but that's documented, and that was about 10 years ago, so I can imagine what they're getting now, since they're... everybody's printing their own money. Oh, oh, God, that other one's Public Works, too. But he's not here today. So anyway, that's it. I just wanted to start out and really... what I was really looking for was to make sure that Ian Bane has his facts straight before he goes advertising them. It might get him sued.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Carbone?
I think Donna covered quite a bit of it, other than when somebody comes to this meeting, they need to make sure they understand when they speak during public comment that they speak truth and not rumor, because everything we heard today from certain individuals was rumor, because they want to use that pulpit to get their agenda across. And we have several of those individuals. Some of them say that they're wholly impure, but they're not. So I just want to make sure that the public understands that as part of my comment.
Well, some of them are trying to set themselves up to run for election next time, and they think they're going to win it by condemning certain people that are sitting on this board when they rerun, if they rerun. I don't get to rerun, so I wait till they hear what I have to say after I'm no longer in office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Strickland?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing. Oh, well. So I'll be brief. My goal... my goal was to be finished and get staff out and home by 5:00, but we almost made it. Public comment, you know, it was agendized, actually, twice for the phone system, for public callers. And we went back and forth, and one of the things that was said, and I said, and we fought to keep the system, and it was... it's the taxpayers' money, but for whatever reason, that they're not able to attend in person, that they have that option and flexibility to call in, as much as we'd like them to be here in person, to see them and hear them and meet them and greet and all that, that's wonderful. But again, there are circumstances where they're unable to attend physically, and so I think it's a great option, and we give them that luxury to be at home. Not as a crutch, an excuse to stay home, to not come out and about, because the social interaction is very important as well, especially engaging, because you don't always grasp and wrap your head around things when you're on the phone.
Yep.
Versus being here in person. So I thought I'd share that with the callers and the people here, and if that's a manager, as soon as I'm finished. And of course, my usual closing statement is to protect your children, your family and friends, and conserve your water and spain new to your pets. And now I will turn it over to the managers. If there's any director or manager, yes, Mr. DA.
I did want to call, because I think so few people get recognition, and we're in the middle of negotiating a new case management system. The one we have is no longer supported, which is a little scary. And so we've actually received proposals from three different companies, and there's one that we've been negotiating with. And we've been working very, very closely with our tech people. And we had a very in-depth discussion with one provider that we're leaning towards using, and got into a lot of very technical IT issues, storage and things of that nature. But it was great, and I just have to give kudos to Brad. In fact, we got a call from the salesperson from this company, it's a major national company, and basically said that they wanted to let us know that they deal with a lot of large companies, and they have never seen the detail and the sophistication of questions that were being raised by Brad with regards to the tech requirements for our system. And so that was an amazing compliment to get, and that just demonstrates really a lot of the talent that we do have in this county.
Well, thank you for that. And Manager Sutton, maybe you can... I'm not sure if Brad's on the phone or not, but you can ask him to review what DA had to say, the kudos. That's great that he asked those great questions.
I just IMed him and asked if he was listening, and he said yes.
Okay, well, then I take that back. Hello, Brad. Maybe that's who's on the phone with his hand raised. Any other manager or director? Let's see who's on the phone right now. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can go first.
Let's see who's on the phone. Hopefully, it is a manager or a director of the county.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, Keith Tarwana, spelled T-A-R-W-A-N-A. Apologies if I missed it. Just wanted to see if item 41 was heard today.
Hold on, please, Keith. Yes, item 41 was heard, and we are no longer... just FYI, we are no longer on public comment. But 41 was heard just before lunch was called. Thank you. Thank you for calling, sir. Okay? Manager Sutton?
Just two items. I wanted to clarify or actually confirm that we are not accepting money for busloads of homeless people from anywhere, so just wanted to...
Thank you, thank you.
Put that on the record. And then the second thing, there were some comments made about the lack of information on Transparent Nevada. And as Public Information Officer Knightley indicated, we are working with them. We're not sure we have submitted the information, but regardless of whether it's on that website or any other website, Nye County is committed to transparency, so anybody who requests that information independently from us will receive it.
Thank you. I haven't seen any extra buses driving around here in town.
We would notice, because we have such a big transportation issue here, right? We've got regular RTC buses just running all over the place, right?
What's really sad is we get people who are calling us on a pretty regular basis saying, "My..." and obviously, when you ask the question, "Who did you hear it from? Do you have pictures? Do you have proof? You know the date? You know kind of color?" Nobody has the information, other than, "Yes, they're here."
I've just been telling them to watch the meeting or look up the particular item they're concerned about and watch it for themselves. Because that's the only way. They're not going to believe you if you tell them. They're going to have to see it for themselves.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here and your patience, being engaged.
Thank you, Sam, number two.
Yes. Janie, Sam.
Janie, Sam.
Yes, thank you very... you did a great job. Of course, we wish Sam well, and we miss her. And thank you again, staff throughout the county, for everything that you do. So we are now adjourned at 5:16 PM.